Okay folks, welcome to today's city council meeting of Tuesday, October the 26th. We are looking for a motion to go in camera right now. Moved by Councilor Thompson, second by Councilor Carrillo. We'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's unanimous. And just before we go, a reminder, no electronic devices. You can either leave them here or you can leave them outside the room downstairs. We will have our sergeant-at-arms keeping an eye on things here in the room if you leave them behind. And we will be resuming Committee Room 2 downstairs at City Hall. Then we'll come back here afterward. Alright, thank you.
You ready, Bill? Can I start? Okay. I hear you perfectly.
You think it's being under here?
No, I'm not sure. Jason. Okay, folks, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of Tuesday, October the 26th. We just finished our in-camera meeting downstairs in Committee Room Two. We are now reconvening in the regular council chambers. First order of business, we start off with the performance of "Oh, Canada." I'll read to you first a little bit of the background on the performer. Tonight's performer is Mila Nemetu. Mila is eight years old. She's only been taking voice lessons for six months. She is in grade three. She enjoys singing onstage and performing in theater productions. She emceed her school Christmas concert in French last year. And today, she's here to share the National Anthem with us. So please welcome Mila, Mila Nemetu. And I'd ask that you stand, please, and enjoy Mila's rendition of "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True pages of in all our sons command. With glowing hearts, easy rest, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keeper land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Well, Mila, thank you very much. Eight years old, takes a lot of bravery to sing "Oh, Canada" for everybody here. And we want to say you did a terrific job. Thank you for your effort. A for effort. Thank you very much. Well done.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Strange, Counselor Thompson Strange.
I just want to thank Mila for that great National Anthem. And it's probably the best one I've heard probably in the last forty or fifty years since I've been on council, since 1968. So I just want to thank Mila. And anyways, we can get back on with the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Counselor, for that. Appreciate the input and the feedback, as always. Now, with the aim of sharing information and educating our community on land treaties and acknowledging the many land treaties that overlay the city of Niagara Falls and the Niagara region, I now invite Brian Kahn, who's a local artist of Métis descent, an advocate and strong voice in the Indigenous community, to share his testimony as we acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who were stewards of this land for millennia before us. We look forward to building, to continuing to build on our friendships in harmony and in shared gratitude for this special place that we live in. Now, I'd ask our clerk and his team if they would please play the video of Brian Kahn.
Tansy, Brian Kahn, Otisika Shan, Niagara Falls, New Wicken. Metaniska Wakamakana, Gilene Wak, Mashka Geywak, Ekwaméti. So hello, greetings to all. My name is Brian Kahn. I live in Niagara Falls. But my ancestors, they come from the north, from the far north. They are the Musquee, and I am Métis. So I'm going to start the meeting today with what is known as a traditional opening. And we don't know what your day was like as everyone gathers here in the meeting. Somebody may have had a fight with a spouse member, or someone may have cut them off as they were driving to the meeting. So if we all come together in a good way, in a good mind, and think of all the great gifts that have been given to us by the Creator. So with that, I call to Kissimmee, the Great Spirit, the Creator. And we are thankful to Him for all of the gifts that He has given to us. And the greatest of those gifts is the gift of Mother Earth. And through her, we are given additional gifts, plants and medicines that grow from the ground. And we are grateful to each and every one of them, for they nourish us and they heal us as we continue through our journey. We're grateful to the Tree Nation, because the Tree Nation, trees stand tall and proud, and they provide us with the materials to make our homes. Traditionally, they provided the materials to build our fires for staying warm and for our ceremonies. The trees and the forests and the lands are also a place for all the two-legged, the four-legged, the swimmers, the crawlers, the flyers. And we are grateful to each and every one of them. And when I think of all of those gifts that the Creator's given to us for us to use, we must be reminded that as we come across an item that we want to harvest, that we don't take the very first one that we see, whether it's a plant or an animal. We don't even take the second one that we see. It's not until we find the third that we realize that there is enough for those who follow behind us, whether it's those who followed the next day, or those who follow for generations to come. And those are the teachings of my ancestors. We are grateful for the four winds that blow and the four directions that surround us. With that, that brings the change of season and new opportunities. At this time, it is a time of harvesting of those plants. And with that, we take one of the sacred medicines, tobacco, and we lay it on the ground as a gift to Mother Earth for giving us that opportunity to grow and nourish that plant or that medicine, which ultimately comes back to us. So we're grateful for that harvest that we have. Living in Niagara, we're surrounded by water, and the water is so important. It makes up a good part of our body. And it also provides us with refreshment throughout the day. But more importantly, it is through water that we have our very first homes. Before we were born, we lived within water, within our mothers. So we're grateful to that water. I looked at the sky, and I see Brother Son, he's out there, and he provides us with light and warmth. Whether he's shining bright or whether hidden behind the clouds, he's there, and we know he's there, and we are grateful to him. At the night skies, grandmother moon, she shines high and strong and bright. And we are grateful for the gifts that she brings to us. But with that, we are grateful how she influences our bodies and influences the waterways so that through grandmother moon, through the water, and through the women of our nations, that our future generations are born. We are grateful. And finally, I look to the night sky, and I see the stars that are up there. And I am told that those stars are our ancestors. They're watching over us. They're guiding us. They're leading us along our journey. And so with that, I will say, hi, hi. Thank you, merci, merci, language.
Thank you very much for sharing that, Brian. Hearing voices from the Indigenous community remains important, as this is a time for us to listen and to learn. We look forward to welcoming more Indigenous friends from our community and amplifying their voices through the opportunity to share at the beginning of our council meetings as we offer land acknowledgement and strengthen our friendships. I am now looking for an adoption of the minutes from the October 5th, 2021 council meeting. Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you. And just before we move on, I do want to acknowledge we've got Counselor Campbell, I think. We're not really sure who's behind the hockey mask. And of course, we've got Counselor Dubrowski.
Yeah, I have my nighttime version of Counselor Thompson. It's some of its back in Committee Room One, so I'll go get it out.
Well, it'd be nice to see.
The morning is high.
That's cute. It's more than most of us did, so good for you. Let me get it on. Okay, there you go. And then that chain, can you help Counselor Dubrowski fix that for Counselor Strange-Thompson? Should go back further. That little chain should be in the back. See that little tiny chain in the front? That should be behind your head. Yeah, just lift it up, and there you go. Without messing his beautiful hair. There we go. Now, you want to stand up for a second there?
This is actually Wayne's suit.
Beautiful. Looks good. I just want to acknowledge those of you that were brave enough. And Counselor Peter Angelo has his orange shirt, so he did kind of do it. Huh? Orange and black? Okay, fair enough. So thank you, and I know Counsel- Yeah, Counselor Carrio's George Clooney. I know Counselor LaCoco's got her stuff out in the car, apparently. And I apologize. I should have put a little more effort into it, but I've been here a little bit longer than you guys, and I had other things I had to do first. It's just an excuse, but I'm going with it. Usually, I'm the guy to dress up and do something, and this time, you guys showed me up, so good for you. I'd like to thank those of you that did, in the spirit of Halloween, did come in and dress up, and that's great. We really appreciate it. And the rest of us will be eating candy and chips, and we'll be thinking about you. So moving on to disclosures of a particular interest. Do we have Counselor LaCoco, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Check payable to myself, check 447-167, September 1st, for $122.12 payable for expenses. Three checks payable to the Downtown Board of Management. My spouse's former employer, 0036-0029, August 30th, for $3,250. Check 00374-0026, September 23rd, for $21,000. Check 00377-0029, October 4th, 2021, for $100,000. And the next three checks are payable to the Niagara Falls Art Gallery. I sit on as a board member, as a resident. Check 00368-0058, August 30th, 2021, for $2,333.33. Check 00370-0042, September 13th, 2021, for $364.7. Check 00374-0053, September 23rd, 2021, for $2,333.33. And number 7.7, the Niagara Falls Exchange Report, specifies potential partners as Niagara Arts Showcase and Carmel Fine Art Music Festival. I was the administrator in 2018. It's no longer active. So it's not a conflict of interest, but I wanted to bring it forward. And apparently, we approved it on April 9th, 2019, which I did not catch them in that report. Those are my conflicts, and I have sent them to the clerk.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Under the regional presentation, the reconstruction of Montrose and Lyons Creek. My family owns land that will be affected. And under municipal accounts, DSBN 00374-0025, and 00375-0003, my spouse's employer. And under the Niagara Catholic District School Board, who's my employer, 00375-0004, and also 00368-0057, and I'll leave this here for the clerk.
Thank you for that. Any other disclosures? Okay, and myself, check number 447-556, a check to myself, and I will give this to the clerk as well. Thank you for that. Now, on to the favorite part of the meeting, mayor's reports and announcements. They're brief tonight. I understand there's a World Series game tonight, so I've been asked to be brief. So here we go. Obituaries. Robert Judge, father of Jim Judge, of our Municipal Works Department passed, and we offer our condolences for the family. Also, friend of many of ours, Sandy Bellows, Chair of the Niagara Parks Commission. She was a city counselor, she was a regional counselor, and as I mentioned, she was the Chair of the Niagara Parks Commission. We did illuminate the falls in pink on Monday, October the 18th, in her honor, her favorite color. I nicknamed her a while back Hollywood, and she called me Hollywood. And so we go, whoever saw the other one first called that one Hollywood, and they became Hollywood for the rest of that night. Little funny goofy thing. She used to love chicken wings and pizza at Yanks', and she kept saying, when I get better, we're going to go back to Yanks'. So special place when we go there. The Niagara Parks Commission Power Plant opened up under her leadership, and I know, and I'm glad that she was able to see it open, see it to fruition. And there will be a dedication ceremony in the near future, along with the rest of the commission. And I understand some provincial politicians will be joining us for that as well. And we wish, our sincere wishes to Spencer and Colton, her sons, at the service for her last week. You really got to feel for who Sandy was and who her family was. And her brother Brian Bellows was down too. And when both of her brothers spoke, and they, and her kids talked, and you really got to feel for who the person was personally. And it's obvious. She didn't judge. She just allowed everybody into her house under her roof and treated everybody nice. And real sweetheart, we'll definitely miss her. Council and senior staff birthdays. I know Alex Rilovich is on the screen tonight, so Saturday, October the 30th- Saturday, October the 30th, this Saturday will be his birthday, and I know we already mentioned it, but yesterday was Counselor Peter Angelo's birthday. It was just too close to not mention it again. Yeah, he always says it's February the 31st, he always tells me. So, yeah, funny guy, right? Every time, and the one year I got sucked in, I actually wrote it down. Not really thinking, and then, anyway, we'll leave it at that, okay? So his birthday was yesterday, don't let him tell you the 31st. I bet. Counsel representation, we'd like to thank Counselor LaCoco for representing the city at the grand opening of the Green Door Project, and to Counselor Campbell, I'm not sure where he is right now, but when he's here, please pass his along to him, representing the city at the Garba Dance and Concert Greetings, the Virtual Islamophobia and Racism Presentation, and the Dewali Lamp Lighting. So thank you for that, Counselor. Remembrance Day is upcoming, Thursday, November the 11th, at 10:45 a.m. This will be taking place at the Fairview Cemetery, as we did last year. It'll be an outdoor ceremony, and we had to set this up before the COVID protocols were lifted. We're going to go through with the plans that have already been made, and this year, seating again will be limited, and there will be some distancing. Face coverings are requested if you can't be within, if you can't distance. It is open to the public, but it will be livestreamed at niagarafals.ca, so anyone that wants to participate can do so and watch from the comfort of your home. The fire department had their line of duty ceremony last weekend in memory of Fred Hall. They also honored our 11 past fallen members. I was joined by Counselors LaCoco, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Peter Angelo as well. So thank you to our fire department. We did have a grand opening of Fortius Physiotherapy and Wellness Niagara last week, and a big business retirement, Fred and Louis Barber Shop and Hairstyling. After, I was joined by Counselor Thompson, that's where Counselor Thompson goes to get his hair cut, and maybe some other things, I'm not sure, but only him and his barber know what happens there. Yeah, you get yours on there too. And I've never seen anyone so depressed. Counselor Thompson says, "I don't know, I just got it done yesterday, I don't know where I'm going to go now, I got to find a new barber." And these guys said, "Wayne, it's been 50 years, we got to retire eventually." So Fred was funny, he did tell us that he started at the age of 10 years of age in Italy, where he started shaving people. He'd stand on a soapbox and shave people. Just imagine the confidence you have to have in a 10-year-old to put a razor to your throat standing on a box, but he started that way and continued on for more than 70 years. So it was real emotional, they had several generations of their family there, wonderful family, the Abriscados, and it was nice. So I just wish all the best for Counselor Thompson to go looking for a new barber to go to, that can keep all the secrets. I do want to mention, when I first got into politics, everyone said, "You need to go there because they know everybody, you got to go meet them, they got to know who you are." So on Main Street, no longer. So the end of an era. Lastly, happy Halloween to everyone. Please be careful when you're driving around this weekend, there will be kids, it's dark earlier now, hard to see, please pay attention, please take your time, and we welcome all the kids to get outdoor to door again and collect some goodies. And our next council meeting will be Tuesday, the 16th of November. That concludes the council announcements. Moving on to deputations and presentation, I understand our first presentation tonight will be from the Niagara region, their one-to-five-year transportation capital budget outlook. So I would welcome, let me just get my computer up and running here. So, Mr. CAO? Carolyn Ryle? All right, so Ms. Ryle, are you there? I don't know if we can tell if she's there.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Dadda, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, welcome to the council meeting.
Welcome, good evening. Hello, City Council, thank you for having Niagara region here this evening. I'm Carolyn Ryle, the Director of Transportation. I have Frank Tesoni, the Associate Director of Transportation Engineering here as well, and Pam Miltonberg, our Transportation Capital Specialist, with the intent to go through our one-to-five-year capital budget. I don't see the presentation up before we get going, so I just wanted to confirm how we may need to coordinate that, unless you can see it.
Okay, we're just, we're going to have it in just a moment, Ms. Ryle and Mr. Tesoni. Okay, so what, we're going to disconnect? Okay, so what we're doing, our staff are just going to quickly disconnect and reconnect, and then it will be on the screen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great, so we'll, so we'll be momentarily, oh, there we come. Oh, there you are, look at those smiling faces.
Perfect, perfect.
And Frank Tesoni used to work for the city at one time, and Ms. Ryle is originally from the city, and I can't speak of your third member, but it's good to have the Niagara Falls connection.
Yeah, Pam is from Niagara Falls as well. We're all from, we're all from the city of Niagara Falls, and lots of great updates for City Council tonight, so thanks for having us.
Can we send a pizza over to them or something? Can we do something? All right, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So can we go to the next slide? So, similar to, I think we were here probably a year ago, we're here to present the one-to-five year draft capital forecast. This is just being presented as we continue to coordinate with city staff, and just to give an outlook to everyone there as to how we're forecasting, quite a bit of work to take place, pending capital approvals within the city of Niagara Falls. I'm going to give a little update on safety initiatives because we've got some information coming forward soon on Vision Zero, and then just to make sure everyone's aware of some of the regional visionary items coming out of our transportation master plan, again, just to keep everybody transformed or everybody informed. So with regards to the capital budget allocation, just to get everyone grounded on how it's broken down and how we deal with it here at the region, the main four areas that transportation targets are our network expansion, intersection improvement program, our roads rehabilitation program, and our structure rehabilitation program. And what each of these mean, again, just to refresh everybody, when we're talking about network expansion, this includes the construction of a new road or the widening of an existing road is to accommodate growth and development. It is often identified in the region's transportation master plan. Montrose Road would be an excellent example with regards to a network expansion program that we're working very closely with city staff on. We've got intersection improvement programs, so this is taking a look at an intersection. It could be the rebuilding of a new intersection, there could be safety matters that have been raised that we've been tracking against. We would look to review it as either a roundabout or a brand-new signal would be put into there, anything to do with additional lanes, returning, traffic marking, pavement markings and signage. So that falls under the intersection improvement program. When we get into the roads rehabilitation program, you may have heard a conversation option here from the region, this is referred to as our hot mix program. This is the program that we roll out on an annual basis with the attempt to increase the longevity of roads that fall within a certain range with our PCIs. And then lastly, we've got our structural rehab program that deals with bridge rehabilitations. So this is dealing with deficiencies, trying to correct those to increase longevity versus a full bridge replacement that have to do with the bridge structure that's at the end of its service life, and it's a much larger, more intense work program that we bring forward. I'm now going to pass it over to Frank to go through each of the capital programs. The work that we're going to be talking to here again is the proposed one-to-five-year pending capital approvals, and this work is done through our transportation engineering group under Frank. Thanks, Frank.
Thanks, Carolyn, and thanks, Counselor, for having us tonight. So I'm going to go through several slides that are going to highlight the projects that are in our one-to-five-year capital forecast, and at the end, once we're fully complete, you can answer any questions that you might have. So we'll start off with Region Road 49, McLeod Road. We have two projects that are in the one-to-three-year forecast, looking at a couple of intersections, and that's road widening from Hydro Canal to Wilson Crescent, which is the full roads section, and then we're also looking at the third phase being from Wilson down to Stanley. So we'll be looking at all the road section within that stretch and all the intersections throughout that area. The section from Hydro Canal to Wilson Crescent is in the one-to-three-year forecast, and we're currently working with city staff on the design of the intersection of Drummond Road and McLeod, and we'll be furthering that into detailed design or into property acquisition and utilities once that design is complete. Second project that we have is a part of Thorold Stone Road Extension. I will be completing the intersection of Victoria Bridge and the new Thorold Stone Road Extension. That project is currently out to tender and closing at the end of the week, and then we'll have a contractor onboard with the intention of starting construction on some of the buried infrastructure over the winter months and into the roadworks in the spring, which will then see the improvements to that intersection, which will lead to both Thorold Stone Road Extension and to future Bridge Street construction. The next project is Montrose Road from Lyons Creek to Canadian Drive, and this is a EA that is underway and looking to wrap up in November of this year, and then we'll be moving on with the construction program starting in 2022, and moving on from there to meet the timelines for the start of the hospital construction. The next project that we have is Region Road 102, Stanley Avenue, from Murray to Pier Lane, so more heading towards the tourist core, and that section is in our one-to-three-year forecast. We'll be looking at, we'll be looking at platform upgrades in that section and rehabilitation of the wear-in course, and we will be looking at adding lanes, auxiliary lanes to the intersections through that stretch. Okay, the next project has a couple of intersections, so we have the intersection improvements at Thorold Stone Road and Montrose, and at Thorold Stone Road and Dorchester, and we have some funds in the one-to-five-year forecast to look at some studies to determine the ultimate configuration of those intersections and any improvements that may be required to increase capacity and traffic flow at those intersections. The next project is Region Road 20, Lundys Lane, from Highland to Montrose, so just about where the No Frills is up to McInangels. That's the next stretch that we're going to be looking at. We currently retained, have just retained a design consultant for that, will be a scheduled CEA, so we'll be looking at the entire platform, including active transportation and any geometric improvements, roadway lighting, and any buried infrastructure that is required on the city and our regional waterways, waterfalls. And that is sitting in the one-to-five-year forecast. The next section of that road that will be going under study and then ultimately to construction is Region Road 20 from Montrose to Kaler. So in October of this year, this was designated as a community safety zone, which will increase, you know, fines for any individual speeding within the road section, and it will be one of the first sections we look at with respect to automated speed enforcement, once our Vision Zero program is in place. And so there's currently a study being solicited to undertake the review of roadway modifications to the platform there, active transportation, and any other auxiliary lanes required for that road section. We are currently in the late stages of an environmental assessment to look at Bridge Street, Region Road 43, from Victoria to Erie, so that will take us from the new roundabout that's being constructed next year down to the go station, via station, and we hope that we'll have that environmental assessment wrapped up and filed in early 2022, and the construction funds for that program are in the one-to-three-year forecast. There will be a large component of city work on this, as there's lots of buried infrastructure upgrades that the city is needing to undertake, so we're working very closely with city staff on that program, and we hope to implement a project that will take care of all of our needs. Next section of road that we're looking at is Region Road 61, Town Line Road, from Stanley Avenue to Formale Creek, so this would be through the Melrose subdivision. Part of the road belongs to the city, part of the road belongs to the town of Niagara and the lake, and we're looking at platform upgrades, active transportation, and enhancements to both the intersection of Stanley and Town Line and Formale Creek and Town Line, along with the entire cross-section between those two intersections. That has money in the one-to-three-year forecast, start engineering work. Next section we have is Region Road 102, Stanley Avenue, from Highway 420 to Pier Lane. This project will be done in conjunction with the city's water main replacement. We'll be looking at any upgrades to the road section along with that, and any upgrades to any of the intersections along the way and geometry of the intersecting intersections. That has funding in the one-to-five-year forecast. The next section we have is Region Road 116, Sodom Road, from Lyons Creek Road to Willock, so we'll be starting at Lyons Creek along the river and heading south past the new developments, and looking at urbanization of that road and furthering the active transportation that was added by the city a couple of years back. There was a sidewalk added with a protected pedestrian crossing, so we'll be looking at improvements to that intersection now that the development has been undertaken on both sides. That has funding in the one-to-five-year forecast. We're currently in the middle of a design for Hydro Canal Bridge North, so this underwent some emergency repairs a year or so ago, and we're looking at a full rehabilitation of the north structure over top of the Hydro Canal. So we're working away on the design and hope that we'll have a tender out for construction early in 2022 for this project. Another B Road Bridge is going to be a replacement, it's in the one-to-three-year forecast, and this is just one of the, one of many structures that's going to be undertaken in the structure rehabilitation program through the city. White Pigeon Bridge, out on Montrose, close to Schisler Road, relocation, and this is located in the one-to-three-year forecast, and it will undergo a full rehabilitation. Next project is Stanley Avenue Bridge, so this is just to the north of Lyons Creek Road, and this section of road will be undergoing a full rehabilitation. There is a city water main hanging off that bridge, so any upgrades to water main will be coordinated with the city at that time. And once again, going back down towards the tourist core, we have Ontario Avenue, Highway 420 Bridge, and this bridge is located in the one-to-five-year forecast, and it will be a full rehabilitation of that structure. And in the very, very close proximity to the previous bridge is the Victoria Avenue over 420 Overpass, and that again is going to undergo a full rehabilitation, and that is also in the one-to-five-year forecast. And I'll pass it back over to Carolyn to discuss some safety initiatives and some region visionary projects.
Thanks, Frank. You can see that there are a huge number of projects that right now are in our one-to-five year proposed outlook. We'll continue to work very closely with city staff on many of the different costs here and coordination around each of these projects. I just wanted to make mention that, more specifically, to the 2022 capital budget ask right now that's going before council here at the region, there's approximately $35 million for 2022 that's moving forward for approval, minusing out Montrose receiving early approval, so we could work very closely again with the hospital and city staff and advancing network out there in Montrose. We're pretty pleased with that recent approval to get that going. If I can just conclude with a couple things around safety initiatives and regional visionary items, the region will be coming back, so we'll be coordinating with Eric and the clerk's office to come back to provide a Vision Zero Road Safety Program update. I'll be looking to seek council approval with regards to the inter-municipal agreement changes, require unanimous support across all 12 municipalities with regards to the launch of the Vision Zero Road Safety Program. So the presentation will be there to talk about community safety zones and the implementation of automated speed enforcement and red light cameras. and the implementation of automated speed enforcement and red light cameras and how we'll start to roll that out throughout Niagara region. And the purpose of the approval through the IMA changes is really just to indicate the different roles and responsibilities between the region and each of the municipalities as we work as partners, as we roll out this program and look to how we like to advance it in the future. So it's pretty, we're pretty excited to bring that forward. We'll be back hopefully, if not in December, January, again, looking for council support. And I'll work closely with city staff and the clerk's office with the city of Niagara Falls. Just to highlight a couple of other things that are ongoing initiatives that again, we've been continuing to roll out. We've got our speed display trailer, so for any concerns that are being raised to the region from a safety perspective on speeding, we pull out the trailer that's there that you can see to the right. We track speeds. We can find out at what times of the day this is occurring and we work very closely on the, with the Niagara Regional Police on selective enforcement to help with that out in the areas. Speeding does fall under their jurisdiction. And then anything we can do with enhanced pavement, line marking, the addition of crosswalks, sign installations. That's just something that we continue to roll out through our annual program and we'll continue to do so. And again, there's very close collaboration with city staff on many of the initiatives and how we can work together. Thanks ma'am. And then just lastly, just to touch on Complete Streets and the Regional Wayfinding Program. Complete Streets is an assignment identified in the region's transportation master plan. It sets sort of the vision around how we want each of the different regional road cross-sections and typologies, again, from rural to urban, how we'd like them to look. It's a toolkit. There's a very large stakeholders group that's in effect right now with each of the different municipalities sitting around the table with the region. And there'll be more to come as we bring this forward after consensus with each of our partners on what these typologies will look like from an active transportation, a landscape, a road platform, parking. There's, there's very, there's various elements to it and there's been a lot of, a lot of work that's been done between the partners currently. So there'll be more to come on that. The next phase of the project will deal with regional wayfinding across Niagara region. Again, how we, as, as tourists and locals travel on the region road network, how we get them to historic and other areas in each of the different communities. So that'll be a subsequent assignment that will look for funding here at the region and we'll, we'll continue that or roll that out once the Complete Streets have been finalized with approval here with Public Works and Council. And then lastly, just to provide an update on the Niagara Hamilton Trade Corridor. This has been an initiative that's been long, long underway here at the region. It is something we continue to advocate for and put a number of funding applications in. And as that comes more to the table through continued dialogue with federal and provincial level of government, we're bringing that back again to each of the municipalities for continued support as we move that forward. So I just wanted to say thank you for having the region here this evening. We appreciate your time and we'll open the floor up to any questions regarding to any of the material that we've now presented. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks very much. I've got first Counselor Peter Angelo and then Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, thanks your worship. And I appreciate the regional staff being here today, making the presentation. I just had a question, I guess through yourself to either Carolyn or to Frank. It was just in regards to the Complete Streets. I know that at our last council meeting, we were talking about bike lanes and the importance of adding bike lanes really on our east to west roads. And most of our east to west roads are regional roads in the city of Niagara Falls. We're not doing that bad on the north to south. We still need some connectivity. But I noticed that some of the east to west roads are, are on here now, especially McLeod Road. And I think McLeod Road already has a bike lane from Kaler East over the highway all the way to Oakwood. And then it looks like the next phase you're going to be doing, which is, it said a network expansion. So I'm wondering whether or not the network expansion includes bike lanes on all of your regional roads that you're proposing to redo. And the other one really would be Lundys Lane. I know that the region is looking at redoing Lundys Lane from, I believe it's Montrose all the way over to Drummond. And that's a multi-year project that you're dubbing, I think, the Big Dig. So it'd be interesting to know whether or not any bike lanes are being added to any of these network expansions.
Yeah, that's great. I had the same question. Perfect.
So through, through the mayor, so great question. Active transportation is top of mind with transportation and it's being rolled out across as many projects as we can roll it out. Any new corridor expansion, Montrose being the biggest one that we're rolling out right now, as well as Bridge Street and even the Thorold Stone Road Extension. Active transportation is on the table and is being included as part of those new construction builds. With regards to something around Lundys Lane, we will be looking to see how we can accommodate something to do with active transportation. But again, in that, that stretch, in some of those areas there, the corridor can be a little tight. And there'll have to be conversations with city staff as we partner just on obviously the objective of Complete Streets, how we can accommodate, accommodate for it. If not on street, is there opportunity for an off-street? And we'll have to just figure out what we're able to do in some of those tighter platform corridors. But to answer your question more generally, yes, active transportation is something that is a part of every program and part of every review. And it is being incorporated where it can be incorporated, absolutely.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for that one. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. At the seniors committee, with Chris Toboski and I represent council, there's been a lot of discussion about signage for areas that are high in elderly people. High zones for retirement villages, retirement homes. I would hope that the region would consider that signage for seniors under your sign installations. Please give us some consideration. We're going to move forward with a request to the city, but now that you're here, I thought I might put a plug in for us.
Through the mayor, so we can take that away, absolutely. I'm not sure what signage may exist, but we're happy to take it away. And if there's any specific locations, counselor, that you'd like us to take a look at, we're, we're happy to perceive what we can do and then implement them.
So that's great. So we'll get that from the committee to council, then we'll get them off to you guys as well. That's a great idea, great suggestions. Thank you for that. Any other questions of council? I had one other question to Carolyn or Frank, or by the nice mustache, by the way, Frank, I just want to point that out. It's very Rico Suave. I like it. The question was on the intersection improvements for Thorold Stone and Dorchester and Thorold Stone and Montrose. Are we looking at, I'm assuming we are, turning lanes being added into those intersections? Is that one of the things that we're considering?
So, so yes, we will be looking at auxiliary lanes on all legs of all of, of both of those intersections. And also, you know, the, the traffic volumes and how many lanes. When we talk about auxiliary lanes, it may be single or dual left lane. So we are looking at any type of auxiliary lanes that will help traffic flow through those areas. That will be the specific intent of those studies is to look at how we can improve traffic movement through those intersections.
Oh, that's great. Cause I know some days that traffic between the schools, school buses, they get backed up so far, you cannot enter from any side streets and it's one lane in the, I don't know how many times I get up there and the, the, the straight through lane and the right lane are completely wide open. And everything's backed up because everyone's turning left. You know, I know there's some challenges there that I'm sure you guys know a lot more about it than I do. So that's great. Well, if there's no further questions of council, then maybe we can get a motion to receive the presentation tonight, Counselor Thompson and Counselor Thompson. This is really weird. I don't know if you guys can see that on your camera. Can you see the council? I've got, it's, it's one thing to have one Counselor Thompson. When you have two in the same room, I'm afraid some, they're going to spontaneously combust or something. And the one's even wearing the chain of office. He's got the superpowers tonight, so. It's, yeah, exactly. Time continuing, there's the leaps and everything. Oh my God, quantum physics, bring it in. Anyway, I think it, okay, so you guys know what happened, Mr. Clerk? Can you, you know what just happened? Okay, good. Let's call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, awesome. It just got foggy in here, you guys. I don't know if you can see it on your end. On our end, it got really foggy all of a sudden. It's a joke. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate you taking the time and go Niagara Falls.
Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you. All righty. All right, moving along to reports. Now we have the Recreation, Culture and Parks Master Plan. And I'm going to ask if Kathy Moldenhauer would please bring us through this part of the presentation. Yet we see you.
Great. Good evening, everybody, and thank you. Tonight we have Monte Brown Planning Consultants are here to present a short presentation to council, just to give an overview of the Recreation and Parks 10-year plan. So I know they are on the Zoom call. I can see they're right there. So I will turn everything over to Todd Brown. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of council. It's good to be here today. I'm just going to share my screen. Great. So we are here tonight to present the Recreation, Culture and Parks Plan to you. And I just wanted to give a brief overview of the plan. And at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The plan was, the consulting team is Monte Brown Planning Consultants along with Tucker Reading Associates and Wickens Green Space Consultants. And so we'll get started. In terms of the purpose of the, the plan, it's really to give council and staff a 10-year plan to guide decision-making with regard to indoor and outdoor recreation facilities operated through the Recreation and Culture Department, arts and, arts and cultural facilities operated through the Recreation and Culture Department, parks and open spaces maintained by the Municipal Works Department, and programs and services offered throughout the municipal Recreation, Culture and Park System. As part of the background research, we want to get a good understanding of the community. So we know that currently you have about 97,000 people in your community and expect it to grow to about 112,000 people by the end of the next 10 years. We see an aging of your population with the most significant growth in the seniors age group, 70 plus. We know much of your population growth will occur through intensification and through two of your secondary plan projects at Gardner Road and Grand Niagara. Consultation was a major part of this project. We wanted to hear from as many people as possible. And so early on, we held a number of community forums. We undertook a community online survey, opinion leader interviews, staff workshops. Pop-up booths were, were held at the farmer's market. The mayor's advisory, youth advisory council was engaged in a brainstorming session. There was virtual open house and written comments and submissions. Once the draft plan was prepared, we also brought that back out to the community and tested it and overall received positive feedback on the goals and recommendations being presented tonight. Some of the things that we heard from your community was that Niagara Falls needs to continue to be inclusive of all residents, regardless of ability, gender, orientation, cultural background and income, with strong interest in unstructured and passive activities. Certainly the COVID-19 pandemic has had an impact on the way people participate. And people identified that trails were highly valued and, and highly requested throughout the process. We also heard that planning and reinvestment in aging infrastructure was important to the community as is in emerging facilities and programs such as pickleball, gymnasium space, various forms of biking and special events. There was strong support for the city's current community development model and continued emphasis on supporting, collaborating and engaging stakeholder groups. There were also requests for diverse marketing strategy to promote recreation, parks and culture opportunities throughout Niagara Falls. Now, in terms of the plan itself, we've identified eight goals. And within those eight goals, we've identified 97 initiatives in order to fill, fulfill those eight goals. I'm not going to go through all 97, but I do want to highlight a number of them for each goal. Starting with goal one, bring the community together through recreation and culture. Coordinate the delivery of older adult programming at appropriate city facilities, which would include the McBain Community Center and the Niagara Falls Exchange. Increasing programming offerings for children and youth. Partnering with the library on an ongoing basis to create creative programmings and service, services within neighborhood locations. And enhancing accessible playground features, including being part of the Operation Awesome Renewal Program. Developing an access, access and inclusion policy and framework to support underrepresented populations. Meet with your indigenous community to discuss reconciliation opportunities through Recreation, Culture and Parks. Showcase culture and history of the Black, Indigenous and people of color through public art at various municipal facilities, parks and civic centers. And meet with the representatives of the LGBTQ2S community to discuss barriers to participation and programming ideas in order to eliminate any barriers that may exist. Goal two is to reflect authenticity, authentic, sorry, authentic cultural experiences and local history, which includes developing a marketing strategy aimed at promoting local arts and cultural system. Building awareness of the city's arts and cultural services and programs and emphasizing areas to elevate profile of the community-based or grassroots services that are offered. Exploring the feasibility of moving the Willoughby Museum Collection to the Willoughby Town Hall. Also looking at new and existing parks and, and that they should reflect the city's heritage through designation of, of cultural landscapes and buildings under the Ontario Heritage Act. And incorporating from the BIPOC community various designs associated with parks and open space, including designing selective parks to reflect planning principles used in other cultural communities. Naming certain parks after BIPOC individuals and integrating arts and cultural and furnitures created by that community. Goal three is to build and revitalize facilities to reinvigorate established neighborhoods. So this includes preparing a feasibility study and conceptual plan for a new community center to replace the Chippewa Memorial Arena. We've identified that it should include a new ice pad, a community hall, and possibly involving the Niagara Falls Public Library as a location for a branch. Providing a minimum of two gymnasiums and two aquatic centers in Niagara Falls, which would include the McBain Community Center and a third-party agreement with the Boys and Girls Club. So essentially you are meeting that requirement. Developing an outdoor revitalization strategy for your pools, which would identify improvements and addressing barrier-free accessibility to ensure that there is the ability to attract greater use of those assets. Constructing two full-size rectangular fields to meet your various needs, both now and into the future for activities such as soccer and other rectangular field sports. Developing new basketball and multi-use courts in a number of locations and constructing, constructing both a major and a minor splash pad south of McLeod Road, the corridor there. In terms of goal four, connecting people and places to the outdoors. Acquiring 124.5 hectares park plan by the year 2031. It's, it seems like a significant amount, but we do know that the mountain road landfill site will provide a great deal of that hectares, as well as parks in improved development plans and future land dedications through parkland. Exploring parkland acquisition in areas of intensification. And also looking at policy development for privately owned public spaces, also referred to as POPs, to enhance the public realm. Initiating site plans for Fireman's Park and George Bukartor Park. And developing a waterfront plan to address the boating access improvements and overall access to the Welland River. As well as constructing one natural or adventure playground. Lastly, in this goal, using the, the concept of plan that you see on the screen to advance the planning of trails, emphasizing connecting loops and destinations and linking to non-municipal trails. And we've identified a number of opportunities in the plan. Some of those are identified on the screen. Goal number four is to embrace natural beauty and sustainability within our public open spaces, including the enhancement of a number of water fountains and water filling stations in parks, especially those along trails or where moderate to vigorous activities occur. Developing a climate mitigation and adaptation plan for parks, building upon the work that's been done for Niagara Daps. Conducting an urban forest study that incorporates a goal for tree canopy cover for your city. And establishing standards for the planting, care and removal and replacement of city's street and park trees. Also updating the city's woodlot management plan. Goal six is to contribute to complete and vital. Goal Six is to contribute to complete and vibrant communities, which would include formalizing a public art policy, investigating ways to increase the ability of independent artists engaged in the design and installation of public art. Establishing an outdoor festivals and special event space intended for community-based organizations and is large enough for citywide gatherings. And similarly, in smaller park spaces, investing in opportunities for community-based events and gathering at a neighborhood level. And continuing to collaborate with the Niagara Falls Public Library on things like story walks along your parks and trail system. Goal Seven is to improve access to facilities and services across Niagara Falls, including exploring opportunities to acquire a community park in Northwest Community Planning District. And initiating consultation and design processes for an indoor tennis complex, or sorry, an outdoor tennis complex that would be attractive for starting a community tennis club. A dedicated outdoor pickleboard ball complex. A dedicated cricket pitch or cricket grounds. And a new skateboard park in the north end of the city. Exploring the feasibility of providing an outdoor artificial skating trail. And implementing a volunteer rink program that supports residents who regularly maintain ice rinks in their neighborhood. And investigating opportunities to provide multipurpose-built facilities for BMX biking and mountain biking. The last goal is to set up Recreation, Culture and Parks System for success. This would include measuring program and facility capacity, utilization and satisfaction level each year. Preparing an arena tournament strategy. Establishing a classification system for your municipal sports fields. And exploring staff refinements to respond to the upcoming opening of the Niagara Falls Exchange. Preparing a festivals and event strategy to define your role and responsibilities and the costs associated with that in terms of dollars, staffing and volunteers. And continuing to engage with the school boards to ensure that there's opportunities to gain access to each other's facilities, but also to identify surplus school sites that may be attractive for the city, especially in areas of intensification. In terms of monitoring and updating the plan, we are suggesting annual reviews of the initiatives be implemented and that your accomplishments be identified each year. Identifying potential challenges in the upcoming year. Communicating the status and ongoing, status of ongoing and future projects with staff, council and the public. And revising your capital budget and seeking external funds where available. Lastly, to update the plan after five years to ensure that it reflects the population growth, trends in participation and informs in line with other corporate initiatives such as your development charges, official plan and strategic plan. Lastly, we'd like to thank councils, the city staff, residents and stakeholders for providing input and feedback into the development of the plan. It has been a very comprehensive consultation process, and we hope that it has hit the mark well with everyone involved. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and our team will be pleased to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Mr. Brown. Do we have any questions of council for Mr. Brown? Okay, looks like I don't see any. The only question I did have is the POPs, privately-owned public spaces. Can you give us an example of one of those?
Yeah, so that would be space that a private developer would own the land. And that they would really provide the space on their property and they would maintain it, but it would have access to your residents to use. Usually, it's in areas of intensification, so it might be a small plaza or other area where there might be seating or benching that is put in place, and the landowner would be responsible for maintaining that, but you would have public access to it.
So I understand the concept. I'm saying, can you give me a specific example of one that was used or done?
Oh, sorry. There's a number of them in Richmond Hill, for example, along their intensification corridors. Don't know if I can point to one specific. I don't know if anyone on my team can help. There's a second Todd Brown which is on in the side from our room, by the way.
It's like two Counselor Thompsons. There's actually not really two Todd Browns here. But one example, you know, that I can think of is the Square One Mall in Mississauga, where as part of that development, you know, the landowner was able to work with the city to provide an outdoor, enhanced outdoor seating area. It benefits the mall users, obviously, but for the residents living in the downtown Mississauga intensification corridor where land is at a premium, it provides an added space, for example, for people to gather or play.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, Todd Brown, number two. And I'll raise you one. And I will do another. I don't know if you can see this on your camera here. Can you guys all see this? And I, and I, can you guys see that on your end?
It's quite small at our end, but.
All right, well. I gotta cut the mouth open, yeah. Yeah, what I'm saying is three Wayne Thompsons beat two Todd Browns all day. That's all. It's just a bad mask. All right, I've got, speaking of Counselor Thompson, I've got the real Counselor Thompson would like to ask a question.
Yeah, I've thought about this for so many years that when we were younger, we used to go to south of Buffalo to ski and have that opportunity. And I thought of the regional dump on Mountain Road on the west side would be a great opportunity to put a little ski facility there. And that's one thing we don't have in the city. And I think even when they were doing the study, I mentioned a couple of times, I would love to see a little ski area. And I think it could be done very inexpensively and pull the people up and let them ski down. And we owned all the property off the road there too, so it would work out. Anyway, it was just a suggestion I thought would be good for the young people. It's not a dangerous situation, but it would be really well-used in the winter. Thank you.
So that was interesting, because a lot of people have spoken about this. And I don't know, and I know a lot of other communities have got things similar to this, where it's either, you know, used for beginning skiers or snowboarders or tubers or tobogganing and whatnot. And I know our winters are limited. We're all aware of that, but something like that. Do you have any experience? Have you done anything like this in other communities? Are you aware of any, you know, during your time doing this consulting, that you're aware of any conversions of old dumps or old whatever landfills that have been turned into this kind of a recreational opportunity for skiing and tobogganing and things like that?
Well, I can speak to the fact that, you know, communities have been looking at four-season opportunities. So they want to make sure that their residents are active all throughout the year. So certainly skiing or tobogganing hills fit nicely with that. We do know communities like Brampton have a small ski hill that they operate within a park. Towner Georgina has essentially constructed, they brought a lot of dirt in and constructed a large hill that can be used for a variety of uses, including skiing and snowboarding and so forth. So there are communities that are doing it. It does tend to be more of a private sector initiative as opposed to a public sector. So I think if you were, you're looking at moving forward with anything like that, you'd want to engage to see if anyone in the private sector is interested. It does, you know, there are safety and health issues associated with ensuring that, you know, that there is snow on the ground that is deep enough. But I guess in terms of the plan itself, we didn't hear strong requests for a ski hill. And so it didn't sort of gravitate towards one of our recommendations. It's not to say that it couldn't be investigated in the future, especially as your landfill site comes on, becomes available as parkland.
Yeah, and if I may add, sorry, and then just a quick tag on to that is that the master plan recognizes, oh, sorry, this plan recognizes that there's going to be ongoing planning for mountain road landfill as a park to define its future components. And so there would be a consultation process that would presumably accompany that. And so the city may hear requests for ski or other types of facilities. One just has to also be cognizant that as a landfill, there may be restrictions on what can be built on-site. So just from any kind of built structure perspective, one will need to do their due diligence.
Yeah, I think it's not a bad, and especially depending on when you do your consulting, if you do it in the summer, of course, no one's thinking about winter sports, right? And then in the winter, similarly. So maybe, I think it's probably worthy of looking into, because the city now, as the last few years, owns that park. Fireman's Park, 120 acres. And yet it's operated by a volunteer group. It's a real unique situation. So that might give you that separation that you need. And they do have a lot of private events out there from concerts and carnivals and, you know, Volkswagen shows and all sorts of things like that. So it might not be a bad idea to do a little bit of investigating as part of what you're doing there. And it may be more of a long-term thing, you know, until that thing's capped, but it'd be nice to have it in the plans. I was, I participated in the original plan you guys did a long time ago, Monte Zelenka, in the, I think, the 90s. And at that time, I remember it was discussed what would happen out there. Since that time, it is closed, it is capped, and it is monitored. So we're closer to that being a possibility as well. So anyway, appreciate the feedback on that. Appreciate it at least being on your radar and addressed for the winter sports.
If I could, well, I was involved in that plan as well.
I remember that, yeah.
I was a much younger, I was a much younger kid then. But, you know, we have, we have made a recommendation for doing a design, a new design for Fireman's Park. So that could be part of that process to look at that as well. So there are opportunities within the plan that create the ability to bring in things, as the councilor has mentioned, that are more winter-related. So I think that, you know, the plan does create that opportunity.
That's great. Thank you for that. Any other questions of council for our presenters? Okay, I think that's everything. So Ms. Mouldenhauer, I don't know if there's anything else, or if we're just at this point. I know there's two recommendations there. And if there's nothing further, so we've got two recommendations. One, the council approved the draft Recreation, Culture, Parks 10-Year Plan. And of course, a little bit of direction from us to, you know, hopefully include some winter things like the idea at Fireman's Park. And that staff report back to council the detailed formal implementation plan, including timing and financial impact. Okay, the motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by the other Counselor Thompson. And if there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and that is unanimous. So thank you for that. And thank you very much to our guests on the call. Appreciate your input and all the hard work that you've been putting into this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, tonight of presentations. 7.2, Winter Sidewalk Maintenance Considerations. I know we've got Eric Nickel on board here, our Director of Municipal Works. And Eric, you're going to take us through this presentation, I assume? You're muted, Eric.
Well, strike one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I have Mary Ann Tiki, our Manager of Roads, with us this evening. And the previous conversation is a perfect segue into the inevitable reality that winter is coming. And we're here tonight to talk about some considerations relating to our winter sidewalk maintenance. So I will have Ms. Tiki run through some of the first slides that generalize some of our winter maintenance planning. And then I'll wrap things up with some options for your consideration in terms of how we may want to consider addressing additional accessibility and maintenance clearing of our sidewalks in the city.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mary Ann. Yeah, you're on mute too. That's strike two, Eric. Uh-oh. Oh, we're still having a technical problem, Mary Ann. Hang on one sec, we can't hear you. We've got our IT people on it. And you know how I know? Because they're rubbing the rabbit's foot right now, and they just brought out their horseshoe. Let's hope it works out.
Ask if she connects by phone. There would be a phone call.
Okay, so her.
I want to under her a call.
Okay. Mary Ann, Sean's going to give you a call right now on your, on your phone, if your phone's nearby, unless you're on your phone. No, okay. All right, we're gonna give it 10 seconds.
So good evening, Mayor and councilor members. Tonight, we're going to go over the winter maintenance overview. And following that will be the presentation with the sidewalk clearing options, which Eric will run you through. So as we just heard, winter is coming, and we just talked about that in the previous presentation, getting set and ready for it. So the city has over 1,200 road lane kilometers for plowing and 600 kilometers of sidewalks, which we actively maintain 200. We roll out over 1,100 rolls of fence, fiberglass markers, and we all adhere to the maintenance standards. The city goes through several. So the city goes through several. The city goes through several... So the city goes through several weather portals in order to make sure we have accuracy when we're going to call a winter storm event. So you'll see that we look at the Doppler radars. When we have three there to confirm the same thing, that's when we're going to call the event. Here's a quick overview. Some of you have these from the previous, that we handed them out. But this just kind of takes you through a quick walkthrough on how and where expecting a storm and how we go through that. So we do the forecasting, we get ready for it, we do our patrols of our representative routes, get a good cross-section of the city. We apply anti-icing measures on our arterial roads to help the snowplow operators have the snow not adhere to the pavement. Now the storm begins, so we're actively maintaining our arterial roads. And then eight centimeters hits, and that's when we deploy all forces to go out into our residential roads. Four hours after that, the sidewalk plows will come out, and the loaders will come out to do the cul-de-sacs. Then we do a post-wrapping up to make sure that everything's concluded. The routes are timed to be done anywhere between eight and 12 hours, depending on the accumulation that we have. And the maintenance standards dictates when we activate. So as you can see, a class two, like Dorchester, Kaler, Portage, Morrison, those streets are at a depth of five centimeters. So you'll see the plows out actively maintaining them, trying to get them down to bare pavement. Then we will do the collectors, so the Riles, the Morrisons, that's eight centimeters. Your class fours are your general subdivisions. That's when we're to the maintenance standard 16, we are generally far better than that, as I said, between the eight and 10-hour mark. Class five, so the cul-de-sacs, so as myself, I live on a cul-de-sac, we're usually the last getting done. But there's only a few houses on the street. Sidewalks also have to adhere to, in the maintenance standards, so there's eight centimeters. And that means keeping it to eight centimeters. What we do is continually go over it to achieve bare walk. So we also treat, do a pre-treat when we know that there's a winter event occurring or ice formation that could be occurring. You'll see that we put down the clear lane salt, which is a brine-coated salt. It's a greenish color. And when the precipitation hits it, it starts to create a brine and therefore creates a barrier on the sidewalk and further helps us reduce any slips and falls that may occur. At the budget, you see the big blue piece of pie, that is your winter operation budget, which you can see in the Roads and Parks budget. It is a good portion of where the money is spent. Even though this takes maybe five or six months of the year, it is a good portion of where we have to put our attention to. And with the amount of equipment that we have and the manpower to execute the storm event. So here's an idea of what it takes. So when we call an event, this is how many pieces of equipment are going out the door, how many staff members are being called in, and an approximate cost per each event that occurs. So now we're in our sidewalk maintenance. So this is just a quick snapshot. So as I said, we have 600 kilometers of sidewalk, and we actively maintain 200 of that. We have seven trackless units and two spares that go out the door. So we have five that are continuously used. The routes are timed to be completed within the eight-hour shift. An average route is approximately 35 kilometers. The residents request to add on plow beads. Those are usually reviewed to see if they meet our criteria. And every time a sidewalk is added, it affects the timing for the full route. So we have to really look at what ones we're adding, because sometimes when something comes on, it has to come off on the other end. Routes are monitored and treated, so when you get those calls as to why the trackless unit is going down a bare sidewalk, be cognizant that it is a 30 to 35-kilometer route. So though it may be bare at this end, as he's traveling to the far end, you know, he may encounter icing or drifting conditions that he has to address. So the sidewalk represents about one-third of the city's 600 kilometers that we plow. The challenges that we have is matching the deployment of resources to meet the public's expectations. The aging population that we have, a lot of people are using walkers and canes or assisted devices. We have urban expansion, so we have a lot more people in places that we didn't before. We have high-volume tourist pedestrian activity. The hours of work legislation, so we can only work within the MTO and the ministry standards. We have older undersized sidewalks. We have a lot of obstructions in our way. And we also have an aging fleet. So we are working on switching those out, but, you know, it is a cost factor and a budgetary item. Liability, liability, liability. Risk is what we try to reduce. So as you can see, the responsibility factor. So we have a duty to keep the highways and sidewalks in a fit state for pedestrian use. The state of repair includes remedying snowing or ice conditions. However, it does not require us to keep them free of ice. That's why I was saying that the standard is to eight centimeters, but we go far better to achieve bare walk. When we talk about growth magnitudes, that would be doing nothing. So we adhere to the standards and is defined in the guidelines, and that allows municipality to provide a service level that could be used consistently to defend itself in the claim. And I have gone to several discovery meetings, and we are typically successful for slip and falls or trip and falls, because we do have a good maintenance program in place. When you look at this picture here, so you have to remember that the sidewalk plow, when the blade is straight, is five feet. When it's curved like this, it's four feet, two inches. As you can see, a typical sidewalk is four feet, with the newer's being about five feet. So there's little room for error. So when you see those, and you might see it in the next slide, that when we do see they're doing restoration, you can see why, because it's a very, here's a good example. On Wills, the hedge is budding so close to the sidewalk that the plow operator has to divert over to the boulevard section in order not to damage the hedge line. So we have to then restore in the spring, every spring, that section of boulevard. And a section like this over here, where you see the retaining wall, that too would push the plow over as to not cause damage. So these are very prevalent throughout the whole city in every subdivision that we have. When we come to the winter, other challenges that we have, we have parked vehicles, we have business or residents plowing their parking lots and disposing it on the sidewalk. This is an example, that one there. Here's the one right here. This is just, the parking lot was plowed, they just dumped it onto the sidewalk, and our operator can't get through. The other one that you saw was a parking lot on Lundy's Lane. And this is a bridge street. So here's a curve-faced sidewalk. And the region will come, and we do plow, as you can see, this was plowed. The region will come and try to widen the road. And the only disposal for them is to put it back on the sidewalk. So even though sometimes we've gone down here, and it could be within hours, that the region will turn around to come down to widen the side, or widen the road, and it will be deposited onto the sidewalk.
Hey, thank you, Mary Ann. Now, I'd like to take over and go through with council some options that we want to put in front of you for your consideration. And as we mentioned, we presently maintain one-third of our sidewalks, our maintenance standards, regulations. Put us in a position of negligence if we're not addressing those other two-thirds. And so we presented some options that will hopefully achieve increased accessibility, which means increased clearance of sidewalks, because we don't have the means at this moment to address those. So I'll go through these four options in greater detail with you. So I just want to use the status quo as a benchmark. As Ms. Tiki mentioned, we do an annual review of all of our sidewalk routes. And the one-third of sidewalks that we do plow are strategically done, because we know that we can't, we don't have the resources right now to plow the whole city. So we must prioritize on risk-based approach. That means we are first and foremost looking at vulnerable populations along our school routes, our senior homes, our hospitals. And then we move to our commercial districts where we see increased foot traffic. And then lastly, we know that we owe an obligation to the public to clear our city own frontage. So that review happens regularly. We do not wait for winter. We review that on an ongoing basis. And we will take specific requests from the public from time to time. If council wishes to stick with the status quo option, that would mean that 33% of the city is your base level of service and could continue to be maintained. And as the city continues to grow, we would look to leverage items like development charges to increase our fleet complement to manage more snow plowing within the city. If council's will is to expand the scope of city-cleared sidewalks, we have three options we want to put in front of you. The first option is for the city crews to plow the remainder of the 400 kilometers that's presently unmaintained. We've done some preliminary analyses to extrapolate our current fleet and our current resources to try to put together an estimate of the overall cost implications of doing this initiative. So we know that 400 additional kilometers would again be broken down into Priority One and Priority Two sidewalks. And these locations that are remaining are primarily in residential subdivisions, because as I mentioned, we've already cleared our materials and business districts. So additional 400 kilometers equates to approximately nine new pieces of equipment. The type of equipment that we use is called a trackless machine. It's a low, narrow, small machine that can fit on the existing network and is able to clear underneath trees, dipoles. Those are estimated to add approximately $1.8 million for that new capital expenditure. We also know that we need the labor and we need the fuel and all the other resources in order to run that winter operation. Our estimates is that would add an additional $650,000 to our operating budget. We also need to look at proper equipment storage. And so to give a council an idea of how this could be spread out over a longer-term period, we performed a very basic net present value estimate with the assumption that we'd be replacing this equipment on a 10-year life cycle. And our estimates are that this would cost the taxpayer approximately $1 million annually if we were to spread out those costs over a 10-year period. What we don't know, however, is, as Ms. Tiki mentioned, the encroachments to the sidewalk that limit the ability for our plows to travel through our subdivisions are not known in the areas that we do not presently plow. And so we would expect that some effort should be done initially to identify those encroachments and to relocate them or remove them, so as we're not damaging them on an annual basis. A second option for council's consideration could be to contract out all or the remaining 400 kilometers of the presently unmaintained sidewalk. We know that we would hold a contractor to the same level of service target that we would expect to adhere to. And this would mean that the city would not need to invest in additional equipment. This option may or may not be equivalent in terms of price to the option for the city to maintain the sidewalk. And the challenges we have with an option such as this is the unknowns with pricing. And I think it would be fair to say that engagement of a contractor would need to allow them time to secure enough equipment, to secure a staffing plan, and to do some trial runs with their equipment to make sure that they're capable of performing 400 kilometers of snow clearing within a 48-hour time period, which is the expectation that we would be holding them to. So there are some inherent risks associated with contracting out. Specifically, are there contractors that are interested in this work? We know we have challenges in the past when we tried to tender road plowing with contractor availability and interest. Will this option cost more than the option previously presented? We don't know. And this option as well does not address the encroachments that we previously talked about. So a third option, which is a common option municipalities across the province that have undertaken, is what I like to call a good neighbor bylaw. This is, this is the name I call it, because what we're talking about here is a bylaw that has property owners take responsibility for clearance of sidewalks. And the reason that this is a good neighbor bylaw is it's, you know, not only would they be clearing the sidewalk so that they can enjoy walking on the sidewalk, but they're also clearing it so that their neighbors and their neighbors' neighbors and the kids down the street on their way to school have a safe place to walk. So when we're talking about increasing service levels to add additional accessible sidewalks in the winter, this option doesn't reduce the cities, it doesn't eliminate the city's liability, because the minimum maintenance standards for liability applies specifically to the city. We can't defer that down to the public. However, what this option would do is would seek general assistance from the public to do their part in keeping the sidewalks clear, which in theory will reduce the number of claims and slips and trips and falls, and increase the accessibility on our sidewalks. So for a good neighbor bylaw to work, it requires some restrictions in a bylaw. And typically, at least in Niagara here, and St. Catherine's, and well, and the other municipalities that offer this type of service, that perform this type of service, all enforcement is done on a complaint basis. And that's a resource matter. We don't have resources to go and actively patrol for sidewalks. A bylaw that could be enacted would require property owners to clear their sidewalks within 24 hours of a snowfall. And if we do receive a complaint that it's not done, we would do a bylaw inspection and provide notice that they have 48 hours to comply with clearing of the sidewalks. So again, the goal is to clear the sidewalk, not to be punitive. If, however, we don't see compliance, we would proceed with an administration fee to cover the cost of the bylaw enforcement. And then the city would work with a contracted service or city services to recover the actual cost of clearing. So what we would do is, in being that the goal is accessibility, we would actually have someone go out, clear the sidewalk, and improve the accessibility of that location. And we would work through an actual recovery basis based on an actual tender that would go out on a biannual or three- to four-year basis. So what we're saying is that this isn't a revenue-generating approach. This is about getting sidewalks cleared, and there's no net budget implications. If council's interested in this option, we definitely think there is an appropriate lead-in time to allow our residents to become aware and to make arrangements for a private contracted snow clearing if possible. And so if this were an option council wanted to choose, we would ask that we spend some time in our first year doing education, no enforcement, and then that our follow-up year would begin with complaint-based enforcement. So another option that's slightly built on the previous option is to add an assistance program to a good neighbor bylaw. And what an assistance program would do, it would offer those who don't have the means to clear sidewalks themselves, the support from the city or our contractors to clear it on their behalf. And this is a program that would be similar to our seniors tax and water rebate program, where we require to provide, the applicant to provide some proof that they don't have the means, or they have a disability that prevents them from doing that snow clearing. And then we could allocate some dollars towards doing that on their behalf. If council's interested in this option, we would suggest that staff take it back, review some of the budget parameters and some of the program parameters, and come back to you with a more, some explanation of the program. So as I mentioned, if council's goal is to improve accessibility, we feel at staff it's appropriate to look at the affordability of those accessible options. And being that the most attractive option is an option that gets you more accessibility, so more cleared sidewalk in the winter, that's more affordable. And so this slide is a continuum of the options that are being presented. And I just want to walk you through it fairly quickly. On our sliding scale here are the options that would have the city continue to maintain our sidewalks. Here we are today. We clear 33% of our sidewalks. Council could reduce it and have us clear less, and you'd have less accessible sidewalks, but it'd be more affordable. You could, however, have us clear more sidewalks, up to clearing all of our sidewalks. We would have definitely more accessibility, but we would have to cover the cost of doing that option. Similarly, we could contract that out. If council's interests are in increasing accessibility on our If council's interests are in increasing accessibility on our sidewalks and doing that in an affordable manner, we could move forward with a sidewalk snow clearing bylaw at no net cost to our current service levels and our current budgetary allocations to snow clearing. That's this option we've agreed. However, if council wants to support those who may not be able to do it themselves, a small amount of additional increase of dollars, staff's initial recommendations, fifty thousand could be afforded to maintain the same levels of accessibility and ask our taxpayers to pitch in and support those who can't support themselves in that initiative. And lastly, to wrap it up, I wanted to share some of our comparator municipalities and to let you know what their, their approach is to sidewalk snow clearing. Our closest comparators in Niagara region is St. Catherine's with, with a larger population than the city. St. Catherine's has a snow clearing bylaw and they presently clear twenty percent by themselves. Similarly, Welland has a bylaw and they complete fifteen percent of sidewalks by themselves. Interestingly enough, in my conversations with the manager of bylaws in Welland, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one winter, this past winter, they had zero complaints for sidewalk snow clearing. They issued zero bylaw infractions. So every single complaint that had happened in previous has now been adopted by the property owners and in theory, you know, property owners are now proactively clearing their sidewalks. They're making arrangements to clear the sidewalks so as to not receive fines. And that's a great accomplishment. And it's something that I, I can definitely foresee the city of Niagara Falls achieving over time. Also where in Niagara, Fort Erie has a population of thirty thousand and they clear one hundred percent of their sidewalks, albeit they only have a hundred and sixty kilometers, similarly with Grimsby. As we move down to some larger municipalities, Hamilton clears sixteen percent of their sidewalks and has a bylaw that requires property owners to clear them. Conversely, Kingston, which is slightly larger than us, has the same amount of sidewalks as us, but a population of about twenty-five percent more than Niagara Falls and they clear that all with their own resources. And the chart goes on and on. And the, the one thing that I think really struck me when I reviewed these figures is that the city of Niagara Falls has, has the highest amount of, highest number of kilometers of sidewalks per person in our population of anyone on its comparators. You know, if you look at Newmarket here, for example, which is slightly smaller than Niagara Falls, they have three hundred and forty kilometers. That is definitely not a stretch of the imagination for us to increase up to three hundred and forty kilometers. But one of our challenges from affordability point of view is to go from two hundred to six hundred kilometers. Definitely, as I previously mentioned, an option number two is a large cost for us to implement. And so, Mr. Mayor, councilors, we have a report before you today and we're happy that we could take some time to walk you through the options you may want to consider and to come back to you on your motion from earlier this year. And it's our recommendation in our report that you provide direction to staff to implement a snow clearing bylaw with an assistance option and that we work towards implementing that for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season. And Mary Ann and I are here to answer some questions and any questions you may have, please. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thanks Eric and thanks Mary Ann. I've got Counselor Dubrowski.
Uh, thank you. Um, great presentation. Great job outlining the, the four various options. And I think I maybe even originally brought this motion forward in the summer when I was deep dreaming about snow removal. But anyway, out of the four options, have we received or sought out public input? Just with, with the community in mind, obviously they'll be affected the most. And I can appreciate that winter's the most unpredictable season out of the four that we have here in Niagara Falls, that we're blessed to have here in Niagara Falls. And I totally understand that. But again, I, I think that the more or the most people that will be affected by this and of course, staff and city resources, but the community and the residents here. So have we reached out to them before we, we go ahead and vote on or potentially vote on one of these options in front of us tonight?
Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great question. Staff haven't, have not done any public consultation on these options. You know, we're happy to take that on as an initiative if that's your direction.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the most important things we, we do is at least seek public input from the get-go. We're looking at twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We do have a little bit of time. I, I'd hate to rush this and push this through without seeking input from the community. I might, I don't have it in front of me, my, my iPad tied. But in option two, there was a, a number of costs that staff didn't have a number to. So I mean, we're, we're potentially voting on specific options when we don't have all the information in front of us. And I think it was contracting out potential service. And I would like to actually vote on that maybe as a potential option later on at a, a separate council meeting. But we'd love to see those costs in front of us as well to see exactly what it would cost the municipality. Looking at enforcing a bylaw, I can imagine how mu- how many resources, how many staff time that would take with bylaw officers knocking on doors and answering complaints. So I'm not sure if that's the best, the best route. Counselor Campbell said it before. What's the point of having a bylaw in place if we're not going to enforce it? So I don't have the answers in front of me. Great presentation, appreciate the four options, but I would like to see a little more information coming back, especially in terms of contracting out specific services or getting quotes and absolutely gaining a public input before this comes back maybe to council again at a later date. But that's where I stand with this. But anyway, thanks for the presentation and the report.
Okay, great. We may come back to you for a motion on that, Counselor Dubrowski. Counselor Thompson and Counselor LaCoco.
Well, first of all, the only part that I agree with his comments. If we're gonna suggest to the people they have to clean their sidewalk in front of their house, I think we gotta put that out to the public and hear what they have to say. I talked to a few people in St. Catherine's in the last little while and they said, this is a disaster. We have, you know, one person cleaning it, two or three don't. And how did the staff handle that? And what is the money and the cost of going after citizens who don't? And Niagara Falls is unique. We have the largest seniors in this area. And I think that would be a disaster for them to say, you have to do your, they can't do it physically and a lot of them can't do it financially. So I think we have to put this out to the public and get a response. And that's gonna help us make our decision.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree we should get some public input. The budget that was on the assistance was a thousand dollars for fifty residents. If we do have a high number of elderly population that meets that threshold, I don't know if fifty, fifty people at a thousand dollars would, would meet that. I, I do have concerns that we do have a high population of elderly. That was one of my concerns. The other question I had was, I guess to Mr. Nickel. You did talk about liability. If we had a good neighbor bylaw and someone did not shovel their sidewalk, can that person go to the resident for a, a legal claim or against the city if there's a good neighbor bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's an excellent question, Counselor. The short answer to that is no. The city is responsible under minimum maintenance standards to clear to eight centimeters within the timeframe prescribed. We can't delegate that, that responsibility to the property owner. We're just asking everyone to pitch in, in that option.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. Yes, I would like to get further reports on the contract cost and put it out to the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, Counselor Strange or Thompson or Strange? And then Carrie.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that I think we should get some, some public input. It was interesting to listen to Eric. I think that he said Welland, they had the bylaw. And am I right? And there was nothing, there was no complaints or no fines set last year?
Welland or St. Catherine's?
Was that Welland or St. Catherine's?
Welland.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. They may have had some complaints, but they achieved full compliance without laying any fines.
That's, that's very interesting. And I, and I think the most important thing is, is the safety because you, you have a lot of children walking to school and they want to make sure that, you know, obviously the, the passage is okay, whether they're catching the bus or they have to walk, walk to school. You have elderly walking with their pets and we want to make sure the, the, obviously the sidewalks are, are clear. And you know, you get some of the, the snowbirds, snowbirds that go down to Florida for a few months and they're not able to do that, obviously, because they're not home. So that's another, you know, excess, you know, fine they may get if they're not there. So I think we do need some more input. But I, you know, even signage, maybe even to, to see, you know, children in the area, please clear your, your sidewalks because pedestrians or elderly are in your areas, something to the effect when Counselor Dubrowski did with just driving slowly, but maybe putting some signs out, please clear your sidewalks because children are in the area, elderly are in the area. If you, if you see that, you think about it a little bit more too. And you say, you know what, I gotta clear my sidewalk because I have Counselor Thompson coming and walking down in front of my house. I want to make sure he's okay. So yourself, not me, I'm the younger version.
All right, thank you for that, Counselor. I've got Counselor Carrio.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, later on in the meeting, we're gonna go through some reports where it shows the taxpayers are gonna be asked to spend three quarters of a million dollars in operating costs for one thing, seven hundred thousand dollars to be spent on something else. Arguably, I don't know what percentage of our population is gonna take advantage of those things that we're gonna see later on in the meeting. But in this one, it affects every taxpayer. So I think we should just be careful on how the, how we set our priorities. Where we're gonna ask someone to pay three quarters of a million dollars to support a new cultural hub and then we're gonna, then they may or may never see in their life. And this one, everyone's affected that owns a piece of property that we are either gonna help them or not help them, which directly affects almost everybody that pays taxes in our municipality. So I just like us to keep that in mind when we make our decision on this. And I'd like to see more consultation from the people that are gonna be affected, which in this case is almost everyone.
Thank you for that. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Eric, I have to assume that the snow removal level that was provided to our residents was the same during, during COVID as it was pre-COVID.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we, we have not reduced our service levels.
During the COVID period, we as a city received nothing from the casino.
Yep, pretty much.
I would like it if during this discussion, we can look at taking the money from the casino and using it to increase staff, equipment and such. We, in the past, if I'm wrong, correct me, we used it to reduce taxes. And in some cases, we went for a zero percent increase, a four percent, one percent. Well, in the big picture, that's minimal. I think that we should somehow put all that money from the casino into a program that pays for stuff like this, pays for the center, the art center. Just, I, I hope that that can get part of the discussion.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know, I guess, part of our budget discussions as we get toward that. I think right now, the main direction I think is we're asking Counselor Dubrowski, staff to come back with two things, public consultation and pricing. And what, I'm sorry, what was the other part?
Yeah, additional details just regarding contracting out potential services in the future. I just thought of this, the seniors advisory committee, I'm not sure if they were even consulted on this, but reach out to the seniors advisory committee. And they have a wealth of information and knowledge. There was a, a survey done last year where they collected a, a handful of information. But I, I think utilizing avenues like that in terms of, and I love seeing the, the communications and marketing plan on getting one of the options out and communicating and educating the public. But let's do that in terms of trying to get their feedback as well. So, you know, a strong communications plan, trying to garner that feedback as well as come back with additional numbers on the, on the contract services. So it's a big motion, but hopefully the court, the court got it. There you go.
Motion by Counselor Dubrowski, second by Counselor Carrio. Do we have any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call that vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous? So Eric, Mary Ann, you're good? So that gives you a little bit of feedback? Try to move the ball forward or leave sideways. Move the puck forward. Okay, thank you very much for that. All right. Wow, there's a lot of presentations tonight. City of Niagara Falls Climate Adaptation Plan. James Stika. So this is one of your boys here, Eric, so I'll leave it for you to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we have a two-part presentation again for you. And Mr. Stika is joined by his partner from Brock University. So I'll turn it over to James. And I also wanted to give both of James and Jessica a big thank you. I know on our side, James did a lot of extra work beyond his typical duties in keeping water and wastewater flowing. And I'm sure council will be interested to hear their presentation, climate adaptation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you fine, James.
Excellent, all right. First good step. So tonight we're joined by Dr. Jessica Blythe with Brock University. And Brock University spearheaded the Niagara DAPs working group essentially, which is a group of municipalities together with Brock that got together. Brock led us through their leadership expertise and helped educate us in how to build individual climate adaptation plans for each participating municipality within the region. I'm gonna pass it over to Jessica and she'll say a few words and then I'll tidy up at the end, kind of talking about our plan and go over some high level items I'd like to share with you.
Okay, that's great. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you very much and thank you, everyone, for having us. It's a pleasure to be here. As, as James said, my name is Jessica Blythe. I'm a professor at Brock University and I've been honored to participate in this partnership over the last two and a half years. So let me just set the context here. Climate change is here in Niagara. We can see it in record heat waves, like the one here on the left, where primary school kids are being kept inside at recess with the lights off and the blinds cold to keep them cool. We can see it in heavy rainfall events and increased flooding, like the twenty nineteen floods that cost the towns of Lincoln, St. Catherine's and Niagara on the lake over one point six million dollars. And we can see it in extreme weather events, like the windstorm on the right here that damaged the arches in the middle of downtown Palomino. So as Blair Feltmait, who is one of Canada's leading climate experts and the director of the Intact Center at the University of Waterloo, has said, going forward, we can expect the water, the weather to be warmer, wetter and wilder. Fortunately, we know a lot about how to adapt to climate change. And as owners of and operators of more than sixty percent of public infrastructure in Canada, municipalities are one of the most important players in responding and protecting citizens from the impacts of climate change. In twenty nineteen, we realized that there were several municipalities across the region that were going to undertake climate adaptation planning. And we realized that if we work together and we pooled our resources, we could be stronger and we could produce higher quality plans. So we formed the Niagara DAPs partnership, which is a partnership, as James said, between Brock University and seven municipalities, including Niagara Falls, obviously. Over the last two and a half years, we've worked together through this really collaborative process that has involved a series of nine workshops. We've conducted consultation and primary research with residents throughout the region. We've hosted a number of community events among many other activities. So before the first workshop, we sent out a survey and we asked our partners, what do you hope to learn from this partnership? And this is what we heard. Partners needed support in accessing high resolution climate data specifically tailored for their municipality and guidance on how to use that data as the basis for their climate adaptation plans. Partners needed help in conducting vulnerability and risk assessments and following best practices in the field. Partners wanted to learn how to engage with community, which we've done at a number of public events, ranging from documentary film screenings to panel discussions at various public libraries, for example, in Niagara Falls, both in person before COVID and, and we've continued this online since COVID nineteen. And finally, partners wanted to learn how to develop evidence-based adaptation plans and ensure that they're implemented to safeguard citizens in the future. So part of the consultation process was trying to So part of the consultation process was trying to understand what kind of climate impacts are people experiencing here in the region. So we conducted a climate vulnerability study. We talked to over a thousand respondents from the Niagara region broadly and 153 people, um, from Niagara Falls. And this is some of what we heard, um, from residents in Niagara Falls. 74% or three-quarters of people we spoke with believe that climate change is already impacting the community. Um, various, uh, experiences that they've had are, uh, experiences with extreme heat, for example, uh, community flooding, extreme cold, building on the previous two, uh, uh, presentations. And then what was also really important for us is, um, in contrast to this high proportion that believes climate change is already impacting our communities, only 18% of people we spoke with felt that Niagara Falls is prepared to respond and to adapt to climate change. So we also asked our partners, what do you hope to achieve for your municipality through this collaborative process? And we heard across the board that municipalities in Niagara want to be climate leaders. They want to build social and ecological resilience within our communities and take advantages of opportunities to grow, innovate and prosper in, uh, changing climate. So just to finish my portion, um, what are we aiming for through this partnership? There are three things we're hoping to achieve and we think we're making great progress on them. The first is the development of climate adaptation plans. Um, and I'm thrilled to share that St. Catherine's, Lincoln and Palom's plans have been endorsed by council already. Um, we're working, um, towards that with the other municipalities. We also really wanted to increase awareness of climate change in the region so that it becomes normalized. We understand what we're going to experience going forward and we feel confident that we are prepared to, uh, respond appropriately. And finally, ultimately, what we're aiming to do is to, um, increase the capacity to both anticipate and then protect against, um, the negative impacts of climate change. So that is a little bit of context. Let me stop here, come back to you and stop sharing my screen and hand it over to James. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So the goal of my presentation is just to kind of go over what our plans are, some high-level items with respect to our climate adaptation plan and some of the more important things that I'd like to draw to your attention. So we're going to discuss some content, concepts with respect to climate adaptation plan. We're going to do a little bit of learning like we did at Brock. Uh, we're going to share some of the public results that were, um, Jessica shared some. We're going to share a few more. And lastly, we're going to go over our, our vision statement and ultimately our, our goals for this climate adaptation plan. The climate adaptation, according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, can be defined as change in the state of climate that can be identified by changes in the mean and/or variability of its properties and that persists for an extended period, typically decades or longer. Climate change may be due to natural processes or persistent antiprometic, antiprometic changes in the composition of the atmosphere and/or land use. So climate change is here. Uh, you know, we've all kind of seen warmer winters, um, hot, hot summers. And it's good to think about it in a couple of different ways. So for example, with less extreme cold and shorter snow seasons, the tick population's been increasing. That decreases the amount of outdoor enjoyment for people along our, our paths and our trails and our parks. So when you think of climate change, you think of weather, uh, you think of heat, but you also need to think of socio-economics, um, factors, um, personal enjoyment. All those factors kind of play a role in, in looking at a climate adaptation plan. Our rate events are becoming more frequent, higher intensities, we're all aware of that. Wind damage causing property damage and impacting people's home insurance. So climate change isn't just environment itself, but think about it from an infrastructure perspective and also financial perspectives to, to our residents. So there's a couple of key concepts, uh, climate adaptation and climate mitigation. They're, they're two different concepts. They're not mutually exclusive from each other. So for example, climate adaptation, uh, it speaks to a strategy for adapting to climate change, whereas climate mitigation, um, speaks to a strategy for reducing the impacts of climate change. Climate adaptation looks at long-term efforts and strategies, whereas mitigation looks at a short-term goal. So maybe a, a 2020 or a 2030 or a 2040 goal. And lastly, adaptation looks at localized and scale and scope, whereas mitigation is more of a national or global scale. As I said, the two concepts are not mutually exclusive. So you can see there's some overlap here in this chart. Um, but from the adaptation perspective, things like emergency management, flood protection and climate resilient buildings are, are things that we can focus on at the municipal level. Um, and at the, the national level or larger scale, even if it's regional or provincial, you can look at things like renewable energy and waste management and things of that nature. So vulnerability itself, it can be described as the degree to which the system is susceptible or unable to cope with the diverse effects of climate change, including climate variability and extremes. Vulnerability is a function of the character magnitude and the rate of climate variation to which the system is exposed, its sensitivity and its adaptive capacity. So this is a, a small excerpt from the, the adaptation plan itself, and I just wanted to draw your attention to, to these four key kind of weather data points. So the, the data you see here is, is some data that Brock helped us pull together and it's for Niagara Falls specifically. So historically, our average temperature of around eight and a half degrees Celsius. Uh, 30 years from now, we're looking at almost 12 degrees Celsius. And, you know, in 80 years from now, we're almost doubling our, our average temperature now. So what does that mean? It means that we can expect to see more extreme heat days. Historically, seven days a year, so an extreme heat day is over 30 degrees Celsius. In 30 years from now, we can see 45. And that number jumps astronomically as time goes on. And this is using, um, present day, uh, changes in the environment and what we're seeing right now today with, if nothing was to change. Days without frost, that speaks to the, the issue with ticks earlier. But if you can imagine three-quarters of the year not having any frost, that's quite a staggering thing if you think about it from, you know, we just talked about winter maintenance. You can imagine not only having to worry about winter maintenance for a small portion of the year, but that means no outdoor enjoyment in terms of frost country skiing, uh, trails, our outdoor natural skating rinks and things that our community really enjoy. And the last one, a tropical night, it sounds nice, but in reality it's not. Uh, if you can imagine a, a night where it doesn't dip below 22 degrees Celsius, those are nights that typically our, our residents and myself included, would put on the air conditioning to make it comfortable to sleep. Um, do all our residents have the ability to afford adding another 55 days of air conditioning overnight? That's something that we need to consider. So this is a result of one of the public consultations we did. And, and there's some good support for the climate adaptation plan. Um, the bullet at the bottom left, I think, really speaks to, to the, the community being on board with this idea. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that 86, 86% of the respondents support municipal resources being used for climate change adaptation. So it could be a variety of things and, and I'll get into what those things will be shortly, but it's good to know that we have the community support behind the idea of this plan. So the last couple of slides are just going to speak to our vision statement and then our goals. So the vision statement and goals, um, were, the first goal around was, uh, taken from council strategic priorities. From there, they were put out for public consultation. Um, took some of the public comments, aired them down, refined them, and, and this is what we, we came out with. So our vision statement is Niagara Falls is committed to protecting the city and natural environment from the impacts of climate change. Niagara Falls will look for ways to adapt to the changes that will be experienced, ensuring Niagara Falls is a great gen, city for generations to come. So prior to public consultation, we had 10 goals that we had listed. We took the comments, we pared them down, refined them, and these are our goals. Within the plan itself, each goal has a series of action plans, but I just wanted to highlight the, the goals themselves for present, the purpose of this presentation this evening and the, the plan itself has the meat and potatoes. The goal number one is to increase climate change literacy among staff and the public. Goal two is to invest in infrastructure and assets and are prepared for the impacts of climate change. Goal three is to encourage green methods of transportation. Goal four, to create and implement energy conservation strategies for city facilities. And goal five is to mitigate consequences of extreme weather, emergency events and safety risks to the community. So that's the, the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, thanks very much, James. And, uh, Jessica, do we have any questions, uh, of council for the presenters? Okay, no, look, oh, uh, I'm sorry, Counsel LaCoco?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question. I would be happy to move the report if there are no other comments or questions.
Okay, uh, I've got, all right, I've got one. So we've got a motion by Counsel LaCoco to move the report.
And I just want to add one thing. And once the, the vote is, I have a couple of comments after the vote.
Okay, no problem with that. Uh, Counsel Kerrio.
Thank you, Worship. I just wonder whether the mover and seconder would add something to the recommendation. Your Worship, as I was listening to the presentation, I noticed that, you know, that was mentioned that, you know, we're looking toward wetter and warmer weather. That's a, that's a big key to this in this whole presentation.
And wilder.
Milder.
Wilder.
And wilder, yeah. But wetter and warmer.
Warm, wet and wild, yeah.
But, um, the people that I see that are going to be greatly affected by this are the people in agriculture in our area. The agricultural people are going to be dramatically affected by the climate change. So in, on number number three, the preparation of implementation strategy, uh, and input from stakeholders. Specifically, I'd like to add specifically, uh, people in the agricultural business in our municipality, the farmers. I get complaints or calls all the time that right now, we don't keep up with, we can't keep up with our drainage, with our ditching. We're falling way behind in that. So when we get a wet event, their, their lands are, are, uh, some of them are destroyed for the season. They can't get the water off their land fast enough, so it ruins a lot of the land, a lot of their acreage. And I get the calls because I'm, I'm out in the country and grow some hay. So they say, well, now you affect it. And I said, not really, I'm not in business. But they say they are. So I'd like to see them added specifically to, to, uh, have them, uh, be consulted with as part of number three, if that's okay.
Uh, you good with that, Counsel LaCoco?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, then Counsel Kerrio, we need a seconder. Did you want to do the second then?
I'll be the seconder.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear one. Okay. So with the reflection, sometimes it's hard, like it's hard to see.
You're just kind of blasting.
Yeah, that too. So, so who's seconding it then?
Vic.
Vic, okay. Okay, and, uh, we'll go to, uh, Counsel Peter Angelo for a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I'm happy to second it. Um, I just have a couple of comments. I mean, one is, I know we've all heard from the public and I think the first point I wanted to make is that it's nice to get a consolidated plan at this point. Um, as you look through the five strategic priorities, I think there's already a lot of them that the city is engaged in doing. I noticed, uh, you know, a number of different committees that are in there that are already actively performing some of the goals. So, but it's nice to get it consolidated in a final plan. The other thing I wanted to mention is that it says in the report that this is a living document and that means that, you know, we can receive feedback and add or, or, or change it at any given time, which is the beautiful part of it. So, uh, with that in mind, I hope that once we consolidate it into a final plan, that we're going to be putting it out to the different resources that we have. And that would be, you know, a lot of our committees, whether it be Park in the City or Mayak or Parks and Brack, number of our different departments who would be involved. I hope we're going to show them the final plan and then maybe get some more feedback and maybe hopefully add to it, Your Worship. So I'm happy to second it.
Yeah, that's great. I agree. The mayor's youth advisory, I, I know they'd be really interested in this. And I'm glad that we're continuing along with our water, wastewater separation. I mean, we're, we keep working toward it till eventually it's separated. We don't have to treat rainwater anymore at our treatment plants. So we've got the motion by Counsel LaCoco, um, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo with the addition that we include the farmers and farming as part of the consideration. And if there's no further discussions, let's call the vote. All those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Okay, great. So thanks very much, James, Jessica, Eric. Appreciate your input on that. And you hit it out of the park. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I've got a follow-up, uh, comment from Counsel LaCoco. Would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More and more our residents are contacting us about the loss of trees, the cutting down of trees in our community. We heard in our recreation, uh, culture parks and reports that we need to complete a forest plan and a woodlot management plan. We also heard that we need to preserve green space. We heard in the climate change report that Niagara Falls is committed to protecting the city and the natural environment from the impacts of climate change. We also heard that we need to strengthen our tree protection and intensification, preserve and contribute to the quality of green space. And we heard that residents want to be climate leaders. I've done quite a bit of research on local tree bylaws, region bylaws, the Forestry Act, Municipal Act, the Planning Act and the Natural Heritage Reference Manual that have discussion, and then had discussions with region staff, other cities who have tree bylaws and our MPP. The city does not have a tree bylaw in place and quite often we need to go to the region bylaw, which relies on the Forestry Act's definition of density and when trees can be cut down or saved. The Acts, the Act, the Forestry Act has not been updated since 1998 and my, in my opinion is outdated. We do not have the number of trees that we did in 1998 and we need to save them. We are in a climate crisis. So I'd like to put this motion forward, that staff bring back a report regarding the city of Niagara Falls to implement a tree bylaw. This report would include other local area municipality tree bylaws, the Niagara Regional Bylaw, zoning definitions for different environmental protection areas and any other relevant information.
Okay, thank you for that.
And then I have comments after that one.
Okay, so, um, maybe, could, do you want to say that one more time, uh, read that again, just so everybody gets that?
The motion would be for staff to bring back a report regarding the city of Niagara Falls to implement a local tree bylaw. This report would include other Niagara local area municipality tree bylaws, the Niagara Regional Bylaw, zoning definitions for different environmental protection areas and any other relevant information.
Okay. What about the inventory or tree inventory?
Sure, you can add that. And that's under anything else. I'm not an expert in this field, so I'm relying on our staff to put whatever else they think in the report.
And maybe to any relevant current policies, like we have a policy now, uh, if you remove a tree, you replace it with two or three. So we'll always have a net gain. And I know also from Eric working on a lot of files, if a tree's healthy, they won't cut it down, unless it's a safety issue or something like that type of nature.
Right. Any of those would be fine.
Okay. So we've got, uh, motion by Counsel LaCoco. Do we have a seconder?
I have a question.
Uh, yes? Oh, sorry. Both hands went up at the same time. Uh, Counsel Kerrio, then Counsel Strange Thompson.
Well, I have a question. Um, the way the motion is, is worded is that to implement it. If, if the counselor would, uh, change it just a little bit to discuss it, get the staff to give us the information to come back and discuss it. Um, because during the gathering of the information, there may be some pros, some cons. I don't want to make that determination today that we're going to implement it. I don't mind seconding the counselor's motion if she's asking staff to bring information back so we could have a discussion about it and then decide whether or not to implement it.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, I will second.
That would be fine.
Okay, great. So we got a motion by Counsel LaCoco, seconded by Counsel Kerrio, and now we've got Strange Thompson.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And even if we, we could do a, a, an amendment to that, just to maybe get a presentation from like our head of our, our tree department, Chuck Phillips, and come down and, and give us a presentation of, of the inventory and what they exactly do, um, when they chop a tree down, um, what is the reason, um, diseased trees, whatnot. Maybe he can come down and give us a whole presentation because I, I don't remember the last time we've even had inventory of trees and something like that. So maybe that's something that Chuck could come down, um, or Eric or whatever it may be, the head of the tree department, come give a presentation to council.
Okay, so, and I think that could probably fall under other, but yes, go ahead, Counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify that this tree bylaw is not just about cities' trees. It's about, uh, trees on personal property as well.
Yeah, no problem. And the biggest issue with, uh, trees right now is because the, uh, the ash trees, with the ash emerald, that's what's wiped out the majority of our tree population. You know, before that, it was, uh, we had the birch, um, beetle. We, like, we've had so many different over the years wipeout whole tree populations, right? Right now, we've got dead trees all over the city and they fall down randomly. It's actually a terrible, dangerous situation. I know of a situation on Kayla Road last summer, a tree fell down, hit a car as the guy was driving, a young driver, and, uh, it really, uh, it was a very close call, you know, right near Club Italia. And, uh, they're just sitting along these empty woodlots, dead trees. So that's something else we need to look at is managing, managing the dead trees. And they're dying faster than we can take them down. Parks Commissioner are having the exact same problem. They can't get caught up. There's just too many of them, physically too many of them. So, um, okay, did we, uh, so we've got the motion, we've got the sec, did we vote yet? No, okay. Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My second one is now that we've taken care of our local tree dilemma, I'd like to look at the bigger picture. The Forestry Act defines a woodland as a thousand trees of any size per hectare or 750 trees over five centimeters per hectare or 500 trees over 12 centimeters per hectare or 250 trees over 20 centimeters in diameter per hectare. Quite often, residents will contact us about trees being cut down and there's no legislation that protects those trees under those amounts that I just listed. There are three acts that rely on this definition. So I would like to move the following. So I would like to move the following. I have had discussions with the region on this, and I have had discussions with a member of provincial parliament. Whereas we need to strengthen our tree protection and intensification, preserve and contribute to the quality of green spaces in our community, that staff contact the Ontario government to review the following policies. The Municipal Act, the Forestry Act, the Planning Act, and the Natural Heritage Reference Manual, as it pertains to the sections of the Acts' policies regarding the removal, destruction of trees, definitions of woodlands, density of trees, zoning and EPAs, to lower the density of woodlands that would be protected, and any other changes in which trees can be protected and reduce the negative impact of climate change. I'll read it again.
Yeah, that's a loaded one, yeah.
I know, I'm sorry.
What's that? Yeah, probably wouldn't have been a bad idea for him to review it.
It, it evolved through the day.
Hey, you said the MPP, our local MPP?
Correct, yes. Um, and, and I do have, um, they've given me information from the Legislation Assembly regarding the different Acts. So the, the Forestry Act defines a woodland as the thousand trees per acre, per hectare, 750 trees if they're five centimeters, or 500 trees if they're 12 centimeters, or 250 trees if they're 20 centimeters.
Right, so the bigger they are, the less you need.
The bigger they are, the less they are. But it al, it's always a hectare. So often, our residents will contact us and say they're cutting some trees down, and I'll call and they'll say we can't do anything about it. Then I call the region, and then the region says it's, it's under this amount, we can't do anything about it. And they're relying on the Forestry Act. So the Forestry Act has that definition, and the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and the Natural Heritage Reference Manual refer to the Forestry's Act of definition. So my motion is that we need to strengthen our trees, our tree protection and intensification, preserve and contribute to the quality of green spaces in our community. That staff contact the Ontario government to review the following policies. The Municipal Act, the Forestry Act, the Planning Act, the Natural Heritage Reference Manual, as it pertains to the sections of the Acts' policies regarding the removal, destruction of trees, the definition of woodlands, density of trees, zoning and EPAs, to lower the density of the woodlands that would be protected, and any other changes in which trees can be protected to reduce the negative impact of climate change.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, and, um, probably in future, it's a good idea when there's something this big and heavy and involved that we get something in writing. You know, I, I put a couple of resolutions, but I uploaded them to the agenda for everyone to read. You know, this is just hard to digest, but you write where you're going with protection of trees, just gotta figure out. This is a, this is a loaded one. So I've got councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I think everybody's interested in, uh, the proper management of trees. But how, how do we control this? Because this is a very difficult. Um, I remember the hospital site out there, and full of trees. And all of a sudden, two weeks later, I went by, and they're all gone. So you gotta be careful what kind of, uh, laws you put in place with respect. We all know we have to have trees, and it's important. But I wouldn't just say, let's go ahead and control every tree that's out there, because that would really be a problem in the future.
Thank you, Brett. Councillor Thompson, I've got the CAO who's gonna weigh in to kinda help us, uh, go through this process.
Yeah, thank you. Through the mayor to, uh, council. Um, you know, the first motion had kind of a catch-all or anything else, and at, at that time, I was thinking we'd bring forward, um, the appropriate roadmap to bring, you know, a tree bylaw and potentially a canopy strategy, a tree canopy strategy to the table. Uh, the one thing I'll say is tree bylaws become very, um, controversial in, in many municipalities, because as councillor LaCoco did say, it does impact homeowners, and, you know, when a homeowner wants to cut down a tree in their backyard, and someone says you can't cut it down, it becomes very, uh, acrimonious sometimes. Uh, so, you know, I'm not against the tree bylaw, but I think that's one that we would want extensive public consultation on, and that kinda stuff. When it comes to the Forestry Act and woodlot management, um, the lumber industry is a very, uh, large industry, um, in Canada and in Ontario, and there's well-established forestry management practices. So that's why, you know, when they look at minimum woodlot sizes, it's because it's, it's for areas where they're doing active forestry. Um, and, you know, in active woodlot management, you actually have to cut down trees. It's part of the good forestry practices, and they harvest trees, uh, in an appropriate way. Um, and that's why if, you know, I, I believe the intent of this is more on a, uh, global warming basis, and I think that's better accomplished through a tree canopy, um, strategy for the municipality to look at, you know, greening the city more effectively. Uh, getting into, looking for changes in the Forestry Act, I think, you know, you're getting into a business that, you know, has other practices that are there, um, you know, and, and some farmers and that kinda stuff who have woodlots, who manage their woodlots, um, they fall under it. So, you know, this would be something that I would maybe say we can, you know, if the council wants to look at it, is maybe come up with a more comprehensive, you know, tree canopy strategy, uh, with the focus on doing, you know, positive environmental, uh, good for the community versus getting into wood manag, woodlot management practices and forestry practices, because that's really outside of our depth. We would have to really bring in outside expertise to, to provide comment on that. Um, and, uh, you know, that would be my, my comment. The, you know, the, these are always tough issues when there, there's no notice of motion given. Staff haven't been able to prepare any, uh, further commentary, or, or, you know, prepare for the meeting. But, um, you know, that might be something we wanna defer and have staff bring back, uh, a strategy to roll this out. Uh, I would also say it's a significant amount of work, uh, for staff to develop good tree bylaws, and we'd like, most likely have to, um, you know, engage outside consultants for this. I, you know, my former job, the municipality owned 600 acre, or 600 hectares of, of woodlot, and the tree bylaw, uh, was a very controversial bylaw that went through there. And we, even though we had a for, a full forestry department, we still had to rely on outside experts for the creation of the bylaw. So we'll have to figure out a way to budget this, too.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you for that. Um, so councillor LaCoco, I don't know, so you've heard this, I don't know what way you wanna go with this, or if you wanna leave the motion out there, or if you wanna, uh, come back with something in writing, or if you wanna go this approach, this tree canopy, uh, approach, more of a proactive approach to developing and implementing more trees versus managing trees already put up there? Suggestion from the CAO?
It could cover both.
It could cover both.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And CAO, since we're looking at the bylaw, that will cover everything we have for Niagara Falls. This was a, a bigger, it's a provincial issue, and I'm, I'm just asking to contact those, the, uh, the Ontario government about those policies to look in, to, to review that. So there's really nothing that we have to do on this end. As I said, I've already talked to the MPP and the region. If we put a motion together and it goes there, then they look at it. We don't really have anything to do with it.
But what are they looking at, though? Like, what are they looking at specifically? We haven't given any direction of what we're gonna look, talk about, about it. I'm saying, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's kinda a little bit up in the air a little bit?
Well, I, I did outline, as it pertains to the section of the Act policies regarding the removal of destruction of trees, the definition of woodlands, the density of the trees, the zoning in the EPAs, to lower the density of woodlands that would be, uh, woodlands that would be protected, and any other changes in trees that can be protected. So I do understand what the CAO is saying. If that maybe is getting into the lumber industry, that's not where I wanted to go. Um, but up until today, every time a lot of trees was clear, the city couldn't do anything. I went to the region, and they said, well, if it's not a thousand trees per hectare, we can't do anything. So that's what has prompted this, because I've received many, many emails and phone calls from residents, which I'm sure everybody else has, and they're concerned about the trees that are getting cut down. We don't have the number of trees that we used to years ago, and we have to keep what we have. So this is more on a provincial level, but it needs to start somewhere, and it was suggested to me to start it here. If there's a better way of doing it, I'll, I'll, I'll follow that, but that's what was suggested.
Mr. CAO, a suggestion?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I just think if we try to make recommendations to the provincial government, we should be well-founded with what we're talking to them about, and I just feel, oh, you know, it's outside our, our staff's depth to comment on some of that stuff. But, you know, I think what's important is looking at things that we can do to protect our tree canopy and be flexible with, you know, how development is going to go. Uh, and there's a number of things that can happen. Like, there's a tree bylaw, uh, strategy, there's tree giveaways. We can fund tree giveaways to encourage planting of new trees, um, you know, in the community. And the goal is really to diversify your species and increase the canopy, uh, for it. And I think, you know, there's a whole host of tools that we can get into that. And I'd rather, you know, selfishly have staff focus on that versus provincial, um, provincial and federal matters that are outside our depth. Um, and, um, uh, but, you know, we'll take direction of council if it's, you know, if it is to write some letters for them to review it. We can certainly do that at, uh, council's direction.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. I, I would appreciate it if it's as simple as writing a letter. Uh, we don't need staff to invest their time and energy into this. I was, it was just suggested to me that we had to start somewhere to ask the government to start to review it.
My, my suggestion would be, I mean, we'll put this to, we'll, we'll see if there's, uh, gonna be support for it. But it's still, I think you gotta give us something in writing. This is just so verbal, and it's so hard to get our head wrapped around what's the letter gonna say? You know, I mean, who's gonna write it? What's it gonna say? It, it's just, and, and we're writing to all different people. But if, if you want your motion to, if you wanted to say exactly the motion as it is, we can see if there's a second there, and then go from there. Might suggest in the future, it's a best practice, you come ahead of time with something in writing for council to digest, and staff to be prepared.
Yes, completely understandable, but this has been between yesterday and today, just around three o'clock. So, um, I'll, I'll repeat it again if you'd like.
Yep, sure.
Whereas we need to strengthen our tree protection and intensification, preserve and contribute to the quality of the green spaces in our community. That staff contact the Ontario government to review the following policies. The Municipal Act, the Forestry Act, the Planning Act, the Natural Heritage Reference Manual, as it pertains to the sections of the Act policies regarding the removal, destruction of trees, definitions of woodlands, density of trees, zoning and EPAs, to lower the density of woodlands that would be protected, and any other changes in which trees can be protected and reduce the negative impact of climate change.
Okay. Do we have a second or for the motion? Okay. Yeah, go ahead councillor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, I, I, I was wondering, I mean, on the Park in the City Committee, we talk about tree canopy all the time. I don't know if Ms. Moldenhauer or, uh, Mr. Nichol, cause I know that, um, um, our Parks Department is working with the Park in the City Committee, as well as municipal works on a tree canopy plan. So is it possible to perhaps ask one of them to comment on the plan that's currently being developed right now by the city?
Mr. Nichol, did you wanna speak about the plan that's being currently developed by the city?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can say a few brief things. Um, I mean, first of all, I, I wanna say we don't have any resources in terms of budgetary allocation towards a proper tree canopy plan. And a proper tree canopy plan does some public consultation, looks at some targets, uh, in terms of what do we wanna achieve across the city? What's reasonable to achieve in terms of taking our tree canopy plan from something like 20% to 25%? So we need council and committee engagements to set the targets, and then we need to come up with a whole host of items that we can do, um, that, tools that we can use as, as city leaders in terms of achieving those targets. So staff, what staff are doing are working with Park in the City Committee to come back with the tools that we have in our resources right now, which is the tree inventory and the, um, the annual schedule of trees that are planted, so that we can at least share, um, some of the small things that we can do with the resources we have. But we aren't resourced, and we haven't approved a capital budget item to do a formal tree canopy study.
Sorry.
Yeah, thanks for that, your worship. I just didn't wanna leave it out there that we weren't looking at doing anything in regards to the tree canopy. I know we've discussed it a number of times with, uh, with staff at the Park in the City Committee level. So, thank you.
Okay, so I don't think we have, uh, a second there for that one, councillor. So maybe suggestion, if you wanna bring something back later, you know, in a different version, probably be the best approach.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The reason why I did bring it was because of the climate change report, and it was a little bit rushed, but it did have everything that I wanted. So I'll put it back into something else.
I've got, uh, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, yes, your worship. I, I just think this is a good time to point out the fact that, uh, I know this council does like to use the, uh, new business portion of the agenda, uh, even though that's not reflective in council's procedural bylaw. But one thing that is in the procedural bylaw that is very seldom used, and I encourage council to use it, especially in cases where there's a very complex or, um, you know, uh, complicated issues, such as the last two that were just raised, is the, the notice of motion, uh, section. I can, I can review it with council. I can, I can put together a small report if they like. Um, but I'd certainly encourage, uh, the use of notice of motion. That way, something as detailed as the last two motions that we just heard, uh, could be put on a council agenda. Uh, it would give staff a little bit more time, and certainly council a little bit more time to digest the issue and not catch, uh, anyone off guard.
Do we need a motion to get, uh, an update on the procedural bylaw regarding notice of motion, or direction, or what's the best way, Mr. CAO?
Let's take direction.
Yeah, okay, that's good. And I've got, I've got councillor, uh, Strange, and then LaCoco?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe it's something that, if, if it's, if it's something that's provincially, then maybe we could reach out as a council to the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry to just get some answers from, you know, what, what is their forecast, you know, with, with what some of the questions that councillor LaCoco has. You know, get something right from, uh, the, the minister there, you know what I mean? I don't think it's, it's something that we can solve here, but maybe the Minister of Natural Resources, uh, from our provincial government could, uh, could send us something or give us some information.
So maybe when you come back, second version, that could maybe be directed better in that way? Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have one question about the notice of motion. So for, for today's example, the climate change report was on here, and that's why I wanted it to be part of this. The notice of motion would be for the next meeting, would it not?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be part of what we're discussing now?
You could discuss it, but you wouldn't put the motion for it. You could give notice of motion, I intend next meeting, to make a motion in regard to tree canopies or
Okay, thank you.
wood forest management, yeah. Especially like, it's, the clerk said, it com, that was complicated. Like, there were so many parts of it, and it wasn't even in writing, you know? At the region, you have to give it, uh, a notice, a week's notice at least, and then you have it in writing on the screen. Everybody can see it, you know, and then we might vote, break it down and vote on it in sections, you know, split it up. So it's, it's better, it's, it's a better way to do it. Okay, now, oh, it gets more exciting all the time. We've got our budget discussion by our CAO. And, and you can see, he's very, he's got a compass on the screen to get us really excited, so I can't wait. Uh, Mr. CAO?
Uh, thank you. I believe Heather is going to, uh, run through this, so she can hit the next slide.
Why? It's so good.
We're, we're just going to, uh, I know time is precious. We're, uh, I'll, I'll briefly, briefly go through, uh, you know, four key components of the, the presentation. And really, the purpose of tonight's presentation, um, is just to provide information to council with regards to, you know, some of our budget, um, you know, some of our budget pressures, and some things that, uh, staff will be doing slightly differently this year, uh, with regards to the budget going forward. Um, so that the next slide shows, uh, some additions to the, to this year's budget process. Um, you know, I, I'm a believer in undertaking budget engagement prior to, um, you know, prior to, to the budget coming to council. It gives council some, uh, input. We're not taking, um, you know, it, it's not a, uh, it's not a statistically correct survey. We're not doing phone polling, but it is a point of reference. We, we did put out a survey, uh, on our website, uh, and, you know, we'll provide that information back to council. Ironically, St. Catherine's is holding their telephone, uh, Budget Town Hall tonight. Uh, those are some of the things that can happen with budget engagement, uh, to increase, you know, uh, public input into the process. This year's budget will have more input from across the organization. I think some, in, in prior years and discussions with staff, sometimes the budget has been siloed versus a consolidated view from management. Um, and I'm trying to encourage more of a consolidated view from management. And the other thing that'll be there is I will bug council a lot more on budget matters and get, uh, and put and get, and put tough questions to council with regards to key decisions around service levels, around choices, because not, you know, not all budgetary, not all budgetary needs will be met. So, the next slide is, just gonna go to our next section, which is our budget pressures and, and some of the impacts that previous council decisions has had on this budget. So, the first, the next slide shows the budget pressure. So, what this shows is that before we do anything, our budget needs to go up about 2.5, or 2.5 million dollars. So, if in theory, we wanted to do a 0% increase in our, in our levy budget, we would essentially have to find cost-cutting savings of 2.5 million dollars, or find 2.5 million dollars in new revenue. And that's to cover things such as, you know, our contracted salary increases for our union contracts, things like September 30th, you know, we, we this year had a pilot for the, for that holiday, that might be ingrained as a permanent holiday where we're paying time and a half for those costs. Anyone who has gone to fill up their car recently has noticed a fairly significant difference in their fuel prices. And, you know, all those types of costs get passed on to the city, and we have to, you know, we have to make up for that in our, in our budget deliberations. So, you know, we're conservatively projecting, you know, a 2.5 million dollar increase in our cost, just from labor and other consumables. The next slide shows, you know, some, some things that happened last year that we, you know, council was faced with, and not this, this council, but every government was faced with, you know, some pressures with regards to COVID, and trying to limit the implications of what was, you know, what was happening in that. And to get to a reasonable tax rate, some steps were taken that were one-year type of deferral arrangements, you know, so, for example, the firefighters, the salary cost for some of the firefighters came out of a reserve. That's not a sustainable funding source, that should've, you know, that needs to go to levy. It can happen for one year, but you've just essentially kicked that can down the road. There were some other ones that, that are like that, that's gonna, that can has to be paid for this year. So, there's, you know, a further pressure. The next slide shows, you know, some service enhancements that council had decided on. These are not, I don't wanna paint these as negative, these are all things about, you know, improving, you know, the community. And council made, you know, good decisions on, on improving the community, it just, the cost of those have to be reflected in this budget. And, you know, the McBain Center, that was maybe not necessarily a planned expansion of services by this council, but clearly it needed a service to be funded. But if you look at McBain alone, that's about a 1% levy increase to the budget on that one. The exchange, which is for council decision tonight, you know, could be upwards of another 1% onto the, 1% levy increase onto the budget. The next slide, you know, shows, you know, some other COVID decisions. You know, I'll, I'll take a look at Clifton Hill Parking. You know, this council made a, you know, a decision to make an investment in there, remove some paid parking spots. You know, it's a good decision, it's what other communities are doing, and we just now have to take a look at how do we offset that $200,000 in losses. And what I will say is, staff have already come up with, you know, some potential options to, to recapture that revenue, and that, those types of options and ideals will be presented to, you know, council during this budget process. The next slide is, you know, relates to COVID costs. We're estimating, it's gonna cost us potentially $300,000 to continue to operate the vaccine clinics, and another $500,000 for other operating costs. You know, this is, you know, increased use of PPE, just the staffing at the clinic or screening cost, all that stuff gets rolled into that. The province last year did provide some funding relief for that, but there is no, you know, there's no announcement for that, we can't plan for that. And, you know, so we'll factor that into the budget for this year. The last one, which is probably the biggest one, and it's one that Counselor Campbell had, you know, mentioned previously, you know, the city of Niagara Falls normally obtains between about 22 and 23 million dollars worth of revenue from our host fees. Right now, we're currently forecasting about 60% of normal casino revenues for next year, and that's about a $10 million loss for the municipality that will have to, or not a loss, but a loss, a hole that we'll have to fill going forward. The next section talks about growth and the implications of growth. And this is, you know, this is positive stuff. The city of Niagara Falls has seen significant growth in recent years, and Niagara Falls is scheduled to lead Niagara region in growth, and will grow to, you know, approximately 140,000 people in the near future. If you look at, you know, our growth between 2000 and '06, where we had a population of about 80,000, to today where we're closing in on 100,000 people, you know, that's 25% increase in our population that we have to serve. And anytime you grow, you know, that adds more services, we need more sewers, we need more pools, we need more parks, and the implications of growth, you know, does put some pressure on it, you know, on our services. We have a billion-dollar hospital being built in the South End, which is great for our community residents, but you'll see that, you know, you'll see that we'll have to add staff to make sure that that, you know, building gets completed on time and in line with, with the budget. The other thing that growth happens is, it puts more strain on our systems. We have systems, we haven't invested very well in our back-of-house system, and I'll use the comparison to a restaurant. You know, if you're a restaurant and you had 10 seats, you can get by with a, you know, you can get by with the old system where the waitress has a two-part form, takes down your order, gives one to the kitchen, one to the cash register, and you can get your food out and, and collect your bills. But then, when you start growing to 100-seat restaurant, that system breaks down, the ability to collect your taxes, remit your taxes, do analysis that's appropriate, the investment just isn't there. And our systems are dated and old, and we're gonna have to put some investment into our own municipal infrastructure going forward, to deal with the growth that's happened in the past and the stuff that's going forward. The next slide is on asset management, and this is a requirement from the province. And by 2024, we'll have to have completed our asset management plan for the city of Niagara Falls, and also develop the financing strategy for it. And the city of, we're a little bit behind, but the city of St. Catherine's just recently put their asset management plan for their core assets forward. And, you know, what that showed was, the city of St. Catherine's had an annual shortfall of about $20 million for their core assets. We don't know what our shortfall will be, but it's, it's likely to be in the millions of dollars range, too, that would add to our annual budget pressures going forward. And that's something that we'll have to deal with next year. We hope to have a bit of an update going forward. So, that's all the negative news. Yes, we have some pressures. Every municipality has a lot of these pressures going forward. Asset management's not, is not new for municipalities in Ontario. The good thing is, this council and previous staff have done a lot of great things to put us in a really strong position. So, the, the next slide, you know, shows our debt room and our allowable repayment limit. This city has traditionally been very conservative with its debt levels. It's funded many things from cash, and, you know, we have a fair amount of debt capacity. We're, we're well below many other cities in how much debt we carry. And, you know, for example, you know, we're, our current ARL limit is below 5%, and the provincial maximum limit that you're allowed is 25%. And just to put this in context, if we wanted to build a road or a bridge, and it was a $10 million requirement, we could, we could borrow that $10 million, our annual payment would be about $600,000, and that would have a levy impact of, of less than 1%. If we wanted to levy that $10 million and pay for it upfront, it would be a 14% impact on our levy. So, using debt wisely for long-term assets is important, and, you know, our city has a significant debt room capacity to, to deal with these asset management issues, because we have been conservative in the past. The next slide, to me, is one of the more interesting ones, and it's, it's our tax room. Now, I'm, I'm not a person who likes to increase taxes, but, you know, we also have to take a look at, you know, where we are. And the one thing that the city of Niagara Falls has traditionally done has been very conservative with its tax increases. When you compare a $500,000 home in Niagara Falls, you'd be paying $2,570 in municipal taxes to, to the city of Niagara Falls. If you're in Welland, you're paying over $4,000; if you're in St. Catherine's, you're paying $3,200. So, a resident with a $500,000 home in Niagara Falls pays about 25% less than what they pay in St. Catherine's. And I would argue that our service levels are, if not comparable, better in many areas than the city of St. Catherine's. You know, I'd say that we deliver great value to our taxpayers and a wide range of services to our taxpayers. But the reality is, our fuel prices are the same, our salary costs are the same, and we're, we're delivering it at a very good rate. So, you know, we would have to move very significantly to, you know, get anywhere close to the city of St. Catherine's, and, you know, even more significantly, to get to the city of Welland, from a tax level point of view. I would always, from a competitiveness point of view, like to be, you know, at the lower end of the scale, and we are, and I think we're in a very good position that way. So, that, you know, gives me confidence that, you know, these issues can be dealt with during our regular budget processes. We do have some reserves, are consolidated, and that's the next slide, our consolidated reserve position is about $10 million. Not significant, but we will probably rely on our reserves heavily over the next year or two, as we, you know, develop a multi-year strategy going forward. So, you know, what are the next steps for the budget? You know, I'm getting staff to reframe the discussion, and the discussions I'll have with council is, we'll start talking more about what is our existing service level, and what should our service level be? You know, and what I mean by service level is, you know, we're having that discussion recently, or just tonight, on, you know, should we plow all our sidewalks? Should we maintain a portion of our sidewalks? What's our appropriate service level? You know, how many indoor pools should we provide? How many outdoor pools should we provide? Those are all service level discussions, and that's what, you know, council needs to determine. And then, we need to be honest with what the cost of those service level decisions are. The second one is, what are our investment priorities? There are always more options to spend money than you have money to fill, and getting clear indication of what the priorities are, are important. I will tell you now that the way our capital budget is moving forward, I've asked staff to prioritize maintaining our assets versus building new assets. If the choice is between, and we have this choice coming up in our capital budget, of repairing tennis courts that are now inoperable because of safety reasons, because they need to be resurfaced, versus building a new tennis court, staff have, and council can change this, but for our working capital budget, is staff have prioritized maintaining our existing assets, so putting our money to repairing that tennis court versus building a new tennis court in another area. You know, and those are the types of investment priority decisions that we'll have. The third question I'll always ask, and, you know, is what's the sustainable funding source? So, if we wanna spend, if we wanna do something, I will ask council to say, okay, where's that funding source coming from, or have staff do that? And then, when it comes to user fees, you know, what is the appropriate level of taxpayer support? You know, if you're using a particular service, if, if my kid is playing soccer in our field, and it costs $100 per hour for that field to be put out there, you know, should we pay, should it be 50-50, should it be 30-70? You know, I think Counselor Curio had mentioned earlier, you know, there's a bunch of services, some, some have wide use by taxpayers, and some have, you know, more specific use by taxpayers. And, you know, you know, determining what should be that level of taxpayer support is important for those decisions. You know, and staff will provide options for council to consider, but ultimately, it'll be for council to make some of those difficult decisions. The next slide shows some of our next steps. You know, we are undertaking a budget scrub, you know, to, to look at deferrals and reductions. We will present to council, you know, some, you know, key strategies and items to address budget pressures. We're also looking at options to increase revenue, or, or reduce costs in areas that we don't think are high priorities. And the other thing we need to move to, we're not prepared yet for it, is you cannot budget a $100 million or multi, or more than $100 million organization one year at a time. And we need multi-year planning to, to deal with this solution. We're not there yet, as, you know, we don't have the, the accounting infrastructure and the accounting or finance bandwidth to do those multi-year plans, but it's something we need to start to look at, and, and we'll be, in this budget, starting that kind of multi-year view of things. So, the next, the last slide is just overall. You know, I don't want this to be a negative presentation. I think, you know, previous staff and previous councils, you know, have been very prudent with their fiscal management of the, of our finances. Excuse me. And we're in a great position, but we do have some tough decisions to make going forward. And, excuse me, and we need to make these decisions on a multi-year basis. So, you know, that's really the update from the budget process. I'm glad to answer any questions, but it was really just for information.
Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. Would you like one? Counselor Peirangelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship.
And then, Curio.
Yep. I'm happy to move receipt of the presentation, but I did have a couple of comments as well. My first comment is, I just wanted to say, I guess, through you to Jason, very happy to see that you would like to bring to council a multi-year budget. I know there's a number of us around the table that have consistently asked for multi-year planning, so it's great to see that you've identified that as a priority in terms of our budget process. I, I, I think it'll bring a good perspective to council, you know, to see a number of years out, things that I guess are gonna be coming on stream. That leads me to my second point, Your Worship. I know that every, every budget is different, not any one is easy. This one is a bit of an anomaly in the sense that there are some past decisions of council that were made in previous years that are gonna be coming on stream in our next budget. So, perhaps just a comment through you to Jason. Jason, I don't know if you wanna comment on it, but in the future, is it possible to, to have a policy by the city that, so let's say, in 2019, we make a decision that we're gonna have a new fire hall, we're gonna have to hire X amount of firefighters, so in that next budget, then, we would add the operating cost of that decision instead of waiting until the year of implementation? And what that does, as you can see this year, there's a number of different projects that have, that are, that are gonna be coming on stream, so there's a few that have piled up there, and that's gonna impact us in 2022. I don't know, Your Worship, whether or not our CAO wants to comment now.
Mr. CAO?
Thank you. Through the, through the mayor to the council and council, those are great points. We need to improve our financial policies. So, the one, you know, when I got here, I asked staff about if we use a debt placeholder. So, if you decide to build a bridge, and it's gonna cost $10 million, and staff say, we're gonna borrow $8 million of it, the day you make that decision, we put into the budget the cost of that debt, even though we might not borrow that debt for two years down the road, the cost is taken forward, is accounted for on the day of the decision. If you add a fire station, the cost is inputted on the date of the decision. And I believe that's important, because you should not, never encumber a future council for a decision that an existing council made. Now, when it's interim and you're encumbering yourself, it's one thing, but you can see how you can, you know, potentially impact a new council on a whole bunch of things that they never even decided upon, and now they're paying the bill, and I don't think that's appropriate. So, the reality is, we won't be able to get there. We're so far backed up with some of these decisions and the implications, but it is something we're gonna gradually build into, and, and, and put it into some solid financial policies. When we have more staff and more time, I'd like to bring a more comprehensive financial policy framework to this council, to set those rules out. And then, you know, and then, if we need to, you know, if we need to excuse ourselves from a rule, council will know that they're excusing themselves from a rule, and it's treated as an exception, not as kind of the practice of the day. So, no, I, I do appreciate it. Though I'm moving towards multi-year budgeting, I will say that we are not prepared to do it for this year, but we will gradually bring that into focus over the next few years.
Okay. Well, Your Worship, just to follow up, then, I, I mean, I welcome, and I'd be happy to implement
to implement any strong fiscal policy, your worship, that the CIO wants to bring forward. The only other things that I wanted to mention was, and I know Jason already covered it, but in regards to the debt room that the city has, and also the tax rate that we have. I think it was probably about 10 years ago, we got a, during one of our budgets, we had a presentation from our then director of finance, who categorized, I guess, all the different municipalities in Niagara. We were talking about full-service municipalities again, but when he showed Niagara Falls, we weren't on the better half. So it was at that point that we had made a decision as a council that we were going to stop taking on debt, we were going to reduce our overall debt, and I think that's been the trend for about 10 years now, and also that we were going to adopt inflationary rates in terms of budget increases. And obviously, your worship, that's paid off. I mean, I followed our rate as compared to some of the other municipalities, but I've never actually crunched the numbers in terms of taking it and plugging it in as an assessed value. But seeing that up there on the screen is almost like a wow factor, to think that you're paying 25% less taxes in Niagara Falls. So, you know, your worship, kudos to council, and kudos to staff as well. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for that. I've got Counselor Cario.
Thank you, worship. It's a great presentation, Jason, especially that you've been here just a short time, and you've zeroed in on the situation very nicely. I'm impressed with that. There's just a couple of things I'm sure we're going to get into, but looking at all the other agencies that are asking us for money, you know, I'm sure we're going to want to review that. Surplus lands, we've got a lot of surplus lands, lands at an all-time high. If there's ever a time that we should look at taking some surplus properties and turning it into some things that the city needs, it maybe should be now. So I think we should look at that a bit. Like I said, looking forward to moving forward with you and getting into it.
That's great. Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll look for a motion from Counselor Peter Angelo. Yes, seconded by Counselor LaCoco, that we received the report from our CIO. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. All right, moving on to 7.5. We've got Brownfield Tax Assistance Rehabilitation Grant Application. Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange Thompson. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that is approved. Thank you, the three recommendations.
Just a
Yes.
Just a comment. Is Mr. Pachoni not the one who brought the CIP to Niagara Falls?
Luch?
Was he our consultant way back?
Yeah, you know, he
About 20 years ago, I think?
Yeah, I remember that.
Did a Brownfield CIP.
Yeah, I remember that. Is he on the speaker's list?
Mr. Erlich would remember.
Mr. Erlich, do you recall that? Was Mr. Pachoni, was he the gentleman that brought the CIP plan in?
To you, to the counselor, yes, he was.
Okay. Good memory.
The city still has an interest in Niagara Falls.
That's awesome. Okay, so, moving on, 7.6.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The steering committee came to me regarding this to find out what the best way to bring it to council was.
Which one are we talking about?
Sorry, 7.6.
Okay.
UNESCO designation.
Yeah.
I did talk with three different staff members about how to find out what to do, and the last I heard of it was that the presenter would be presenting tonight. So we do not have a presentation from the steering committee. We just have a report and the documents that were forwarded. What I would like to do, the reason being, I would like to defer it, and the reason being is, A, I would like her to come and present, and B, she is saying that the application is different than it was in 2020. I understand that the Niagara Falls Hotel Association has some concerns, but that was back in 2020. The application is different, and we've heard several times through this meeting that we can't vote on information if we don't have all of it. So I would like to defer this to November 16th so that the steering committee can present, and then we can make an informed decision.
Okay, so we have a motion for defer that is not debatable. Do we have a second or for a deferral motion for the, this report? Okay, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. So we'll call the vote. Again, it's not debatable. The request, or the motion is that it be deferred to the next meeting in November. Is that right? Okay.
With the presentation from the steering committee.
Right. With the presentation from the committee. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that fails. So what's the will of council? Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, to move the recommendation. We'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that opposed, and that passes. Okay, thank you for that. Yes, Counselor LaCoco?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say something. We were talking earlier about the tree designation, and that we should include staff and get all of the information. I was in contact with three different staff members to do this properly, and I'm not sure how we can vote on something without the information. The application has changed, and I'm just really disappointed that we can't wait till the next meeting to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Item 7.7, Niagara Falls Exchange Operating Plan. We've got two recommendations here. This comes from Ms. Moldenhauer. Ms. Moldenhauer, did you want to introduce us? I see you're asking two things, to gradually phase in the operating plan, and to approve the hiring of three new full-time and part-time staff. Is there anything further than that, or you're just available for questions?
I am available for questions. And just to give council an update, of course, we are underway with our construction for the exchange, and we do hope to open the facility June, July of 2022. So the report in front of you tonight is our operations plan, and of course, we're requesting the staff so that we can deliver the appropriate services. And we have scaled down our ask. Our original ask was for four physicians, and due to budget pressures, we have reduced it down to three. And the three physicians consist of two caretakers, a new cultural coordinator position, and various part-time staff, which will be utilized to implement different programs and activities at the exchange.
Okay, thank you for that. We've got a motion by Counselor Thompson.
Seconded, and I have a question, your worship.
Okay, and seconded by Counselor Cario. Counselor Cario?
Hey, your worship, just a quick question. I noticed the one thing that we were talking about was a graphic designer in the future, hiring of a graphic design specialist. Kathy?
Yeah.
The
Kathy?
The graphic design specialist falls under the communications department.
Under communications.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll talk about, yeah. I just, while I'm on it, we could maybe look at subcontracting that out, or buying some from a company, maybe that has some excess graphic design people.
I know the position has been already posted, and I believe it closed last week, and that position will assist with the operation at the exchange, at McDaniel Community Center, and various other, like, city services.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other discussion around the recommendation regarding the Niagara Falls Exchange? Okay, seeing none, we have a vote by, or motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Cario, that we approve the two recommendations. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. The consent agenda, it's the will of council. Does anyone want anything lifted on the consent agenda? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. MW 2021-73.
And, I'm sorry, MW?
Yeah, 2021-73.
Okay, anything else? Anyone want lifted? Okay, so why don't we deal with that one? MW 2021-73?
Counselor Strange, can I just hand it up?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to see sometimes through this thing. Go.
Sorry, I just wanted to talk to the
Oh, microphone. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to speak to MW-2, 2021-76, the Children's Memorial Walkway. Okay, and that's 76. Okay, we got that one, too?
Yeah, well, but I don't want to
Okay, you just want to speak to it, then we'll vote en masse, right? Okay, so why don't we start with Counselor Peter Angelo, MW 2021-73, Lundys Lane Streetscaping Update?
Yeah, your worship, this report is just in regards to the Lundys Lane BIA letter that came into council, and also the streetscaping master plan that's going on on Lundys Lane. The letter references back in November of 2016, when the LLBIA came to council, and, you know, they had an agreement with council that they would put in funding into the reconstruction of Lundys Lane, or the beautification, in terms of $100,000, $100,000, $200,000 in Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, respectively. And also that any grant monies that they could receive, whether it was on behalf of the LLBIA, or as an application through the city, would then be deducted from the amounts that they had to hand over to the city. Your worship, they did receive a grant, as it says in the letter, of $29,000. I would just like to honor the original agreement that we made with them. I understand that, you know, there's been some staffing changes since then, so perhaps the staff that are here now weren't here back in 2016 when they made that agreement with council. You know, the other point I'd like to make is, there is a surplus in terms of Phase One of $160,000. I think in other situations, we've also let the BIA repurpose those funds themselves. We're not letting the LLBIA do this. We're simply taking that money, and we're putting into it, we're putting it into a parquet that is going to be on Lundys Lane, but we're using it on behalf of the city's expenses, your worship. So I'd like to include that in the motion, if possible.
Okay. So, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo for the three recommendations, plus the allocation of the 29, it was $29,000 for the parquet, as per originally agreed in 2016?
Yeah, for the grant money that they received, your worship.
For the grant money, matching grant money. Yeah, we'll go to Mr. Nichol.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, the original agreement, that's part of our report, specifies that the city, or sorry, it specifies that the Lundys Lane BIA's grant contributions would be deducted from their financial contributions. The $29,000 grant is a grant that the city secured for doing streetscaping on the regional road, so that LLBIA is not an eligible applicant. So just want to be clear, it's staff's opinion that the original agreement is still going to be maintained, so if council's wishes is to deduct that, that regional contribution from the Lundys Lane BIA's contribution, then it's not going back to the original agreement, it's a new amended agreement to reflect the reduction in costs that we receive from the region.
I'd like to
Okay, so he's going to, will maintain the motion. Thanks for the clarification, Mr. Nichol, and the motion stands that the $29,000 would be deducted. Is that right? Okay, and seconded by Counselor Cario. Is there any further discussion to that motion?
I'd just like to clarify, Eric.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Sorry, I apologize to council, I just like to get clarity from Eric. If the $29,000 is reduced, and I know there is a budgetary surplus that's being transferred over to items 2B and 2C, if 2B and 2C exceed the anticipated budget, would we be short the $29,000 then? Like, would that be coming through a different funding source then, to make up for the differential?
Yes. You know, Mr. Mayor, you know, I guess to answer the question in a roundabout way, is the overall spend is upwards of, you know, $3 million plus. The parquet is a budget price tag of over $1 million. So that $29,000 comes off the city's contribution component, but if now we have to accommodate it from the expected $400,000 Lundys Lane BIA contribution, we'll have to contribute our matching share of what we expected to budget for the overall project. We've only allocated dollars for Phase One, plus some of the parquet dollars, which we can find by repurposing the dollars that weren't spent in the overall Phase One budget. I guess what I'm going, what I'd say is, there are future budget allocations that need to support the future phases of this project that have not yet been approved by council.
Good with that, Mr. CIO?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that council understands that we may be short on the future phases, so that 29, you know, and $29,000 might not make a difference one way or the other, but we, you know, we do have more to this project. So we can deduct it off, but it does put the, you know, does put additional pressure on the next phases.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously? Okay, thanks for that, Eric. Appreciate your input on it. And then Counselor Strange Thompson is looking at MW 2021-76.
You can go ahead, sir. I just wanted to speak to it.
Oh, well, go ahead. We'll do it now. You can speak to it, then we'll vote for everything. We'll vote for everything on the consent.
So on the
Microphone.
All right. Counselor Thompson's fault. Just on the Children's Memorial Walkway, so we're short a little bit on the budget for that, and a tender came in, $177,500. How this came about, we wanted to, I guess, make something in honor of children in Niagara Falls that have, that have passed away, and it didn't matter what age. It, you know, it's not the right order of life when a, when a parent loses their child. It really came into effect when we lost, you know, two of our kind of heroes, Julianne Misk and Alex Louis. And we've kind of formed a committee and wanted to do something special for all children in Niagara Falls, so we came up with the idea of this memorial walkway at Fireman's Park. And we wanted to do something, and we wanted to, because of Julianne, we wanted to, she loved butterflies, and it's kind of symbolic, and, you know, when you see a butterfly, you always think, oh, you know, that could be a transformation of life. And with children, it's so special. And actually, when Julianne passed away, the night of her funeral, they sat, they saw a vision, in the Milky Way, of a huge butterfly, which they'd never seen before, and Julianne's mum shared on Facebook. So it's something very special, and, sorry, my mustache is falling off. It's something very special, and everyone I talk to, and we talk about this, this walkway, people are saying, how can I get involved? How can I participate? We had a conversation just recently, Mr. Mayor, with an institution that wanted to help. So there is help out there, and, you know, I don't know what we need help with, as far as, you know, I know there's stuff like, we need flowers and plants to attract these butterflies, gravel to make these trails, stones, plaques, signage, memory benches, that people can really, they want to help, and they want, so maybe we can, along with this, this update, is reach out and find out what exactly we need help with this park, this walkway, sorry, whether it's gravel, whether it's benches, whether it's signage, because there are people out there that want to help, and they don't know how to help, and what they need, what we need help with this. So maybe we can find out from Eric Nichol, what exactly we need extra, you know, $17,000, what can the public, or someone that maybe has personally lost a child, or knows someone that lost a child, what would like to help, if we can add that to the motion.
So, yeah, why don't we start, Mr. Nichol, so, so it looks like we're short $17,500 for the construction, and what Counselor Strange is asking is, you know, maybe we've got some people in the community, in the construction industry, that can maybe donate things that might help make the shortfall, so whether it's gravel, or whatever the case may be, plantings. So I just wondered if you might be able to have any suggestions? And as he did say, we did speak to a local organization that was interested in making maybe a financial contribution toward it. So they just don't want to see us not complete it the way we envisioned it, if we can find the shortfall in the community. So do you have any thoughts or suggestions around how we might do that without, you know, messing up your plans?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's a great question, counselor, and I wanted to just come back to say that we moved fairly quickly on this intentionally, because we don't want to lose the momentum of this motion, and so we moved to tendering it with a construction start in the spring. The benefit of doing that approach is, we do have the balance of winter to try to find donors, or try to find sponsors, who could add back in that paving component. We've only allocated $160,000 as a pre-approved budget item, so my recommendation would be to maintain the award of tender, so that we can lock in these prices, and we can lock in the contract work that will start early in the spring. And then if we are successful with perhaps council support, and the work with the others on senior staff, it's Moldenhauer, for example, we could do some outreach to seek contributions that could, in total, sum up to the amount, it's approximately $30,000 we need to contribute to the paving, and the interlocking brickwork that can be added back in. But we always know what that unit cost is going to be, because we have tender prices, and if we are successful in doing some fundraising efforts by then, I could add it back in. That type of work isn't usually something I'm, you know, my team is performing, so we would look at regrouping and providing a little staff working group to try to seek out those donations. But we do have the flexibility But we do have the flexibility to add that paving back in, if we can find the dollars in early mid-spring next year.
Yeah, that would be great, you know, I just don't want, you know, shortfall on a project like this, which is so, so, so special for a lot of families, and who have lost loved ones, and it's a place where parents can congregate and sit, and it's not at a grave zone, but somewhere where butterflies, and they can congregate with each other, and share stories with their loved ones, and we really don't, we want to make it so, so special, and I, you know, I think we're probably the only city in Canada that is doing something like this, so I want to make it very special, so, thank you.
All right, so at least we're all on the same page, and we're going to try to make up that difference if we can. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. This is the same item that I wanted to talk about, kind of along the same lines, but I guess the idea that I had in my head is whether or not it would be possible for staff to create a webpage that would have the children's memorial on there, even if it's the concept at this point. The reason why I think it's important to kind of get it out there now is because there are people already that want to donate to this project. We had cross-country for the high school levels last week, and as you know, Julianne was involved very heavily in cross-country, and going there, I was approached by a few people who were wondering, how can I donate to this? And I said, you know what, I, I don't know that there's anything in place yet, but we can see if we can put something in place. So I think even having a webpage that people could be directed to, and if they wanted to donate to the project, they can donate to the project, whether they do it in, you know, a specific child's name, or just in general, I guarantee you're going to get people that are going to be willing to donate. I know Julianne's father has already been approached by a number of people who are willing to donate, so.
Like a GoFundMe page kind of thing, or?
Just even like an information page, but if people are wanting to donate, then perhaps they can reach out to staff and do so on behalf.
Okay, our CAO would like to weigh in on this, and then I've got Counselor Dubrowski.
I'll wait.
See if he says what you're gonna say.
Thank you, through the mayor, to the council and council. Let staff take it away. The unique thing about this park is it's being operated by a not-for-profit organization, and we can maybe support that not-for-profit organization to take those donations in, it might be administratively better for the donor and for the municipality, and we can give the support to it. But let me, let staff take that away, I think staff are understanding that, you know, we need to better be able, or have a method to receive contributions for this project or other similar projects, so let us take that away and report back to council. As Mr. Nichol said, we do have time for this, and I'll work with, I'll work with our lawyer and our Director of Communications to develop something to come back with.
That's great. Counselor Dubrowski, did you, you're good with that? Okay, so why don't we just do this one separately, so we can add that in, so, go ahead. Go ahead.
We'll take his direction.
What's that, his direction?
We'll take his direction.
Okay, so they're gonna, okay, great. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we move the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. So let's get down to communications and comments of the city clerk. 9.1, recommendation for information of council is the regional land acknowledgement. Recommendations that we receive? Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio, all those in favor? Approved, thank you for that. 9.2, petition from the residents of Sixth Avenue and surrounding area, recommendation here is that we refer this to staff. Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we refer this to staff, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. 9.3, impacts of COVID-19, the recommendation here is for the information of council. Motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we receive and file, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved unanimously. 9.4, the Niagara Poverty Reduction Network Letter of Support Regarding Niagara Region's Moving Forward Transit Plan, recommendation that we receive the information. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we receive, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 9.5, resolution from the city of Welland Niagara Regional Transit Governance Strategy Update, I've got Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if our CAO can comment on this, it seems that Welland is looking to defer this, to investigate what COVID has done, and the impacts on the budget, and I was wondering if our CAO can discuss a little bit more about that?
Mr. CAO?
Is that something that we should be considering as well?
Thank you, through the chair, to the counselor. The CEOs across the region meet on this regularly, and it is, and it is coming to a report to the region, I can also submit a report to council. I would say that every other CEO and municipality is, does not support Welland's position. Welland's position frankly is, they currently tax their levy, through their levy system, about $2.4 million to run their transit system, but what the region has found out through this, through this exercise, is it actually costs about $3 million to run Welland's transit system, which means now Welland makes up that $600,000 shortfall by charging the region more cost recovery or profit to run inter-municipal transit. So what that effectively means is the taxpayers of St. Catherine's, Welland, Fort Erie are essentially subsidizing transit for Welland residents inside of Welland. So for us, for example, we run, we charge inter-municipal transit cost to, you know, to the region to run our part of the program, and it's our cost, plus a little bit for administration, there's no significant profit to it. So Welland has a significant financial hole that they have to deal with, and they'll have to deal with it one way or the other, and so that's, you know, there's an economic issue that Welland has to face, that, you know, that would put pressure on them, the deferral will help them with that. The second issue is the issue with regards to what COVID will do to the budgets, is somewhat immaterial. At the end of the day, everything has been based upon, you know, how transit's operating prior to COVID, and to me, it's a bit of a red herring, because a, a, you know, you don't plan for the future transit system based upon what COVID's doing. COVID, you know, will, you know, will hopefully go away, and you'll be back to normal, or somewhat range of normal, but don't take a look at the budget based upon where it is today, you have to take a look at it over the long term. So again, there's no support from the other CAOs or from Niagara region on that argument. And the third issue that Welland has is they're opposed to the Cummings Principle. Now, the Cummings Principle is a principle that every other transit amalgamation has followed, that states that because taxpayer dollars have already been spent on all these assets, the province gives us gas tax money to go buy buses, you know, we, we have taxpayer dollars that pay for these assets, that there should be no cost to transfer those assets in. Most of, most of transit money is frankly provincially funded, and they're opposed to that, using that principle, and so therefore, we would be the only transit ever to amalgamate without that principle, there's no support for it. So, you know, their council has made that resolution, it will be debated at regional council, I'm more than happy to deliver a report outlining greater details of it, but whatever comes to the triple majority vote, when it comes through it, it has to come back to this council anyways to approve it, and we are going to deliver a more fulsome report at that point in time, but I'm more than happy to present additional information between now and then to, to council. But I did want to, it is a significant issue, I'm sure you're getting questions on it, you know, there was a lot of, out there, but there is no support from, you know, the other CAOs on, on Welland's position at this point in time, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So the recommendation is that we receive, did you want to move that?
Yes, receive and file, thank you.
Motion by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we receive and file, 9.5, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 9.6, proclamation request Economic Abuse Awareness Day. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio, that city of Niagara Falls declare Friday, November 26th Economic Abuse Awareness Day, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 9.7, proclamation Illumination Request Giving Tuesday? Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange Thompson, that council approve the request, that Tuesday, November 30th is Giving Tuesday, and the request for the lighting in red, blue, and white and gold be sent to the illumination board for that, for the 30th. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item 9.8, Integrity Commissioner Regarding Burdette, Diodaddy, and Thompson. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we receive and file, all those in favor? Okay, and that's?
Do you have to call the clerk?
I don't know, I don't think so, he just dismissed it. All those in favor, that's unanimous, thank you. Yes, Counselor Strange Thompson?
And what's, what's that, that fee, the $200 to make you out, get that back?
We'll ask, direct that to our clerk, Mr. Clerk?
Through your worship, the fee was $500, and because they declared it frivolous and vexatious, they would not be getting that fee returned.
Okay, thank you for that. Item 9.9, letter from Mayor Senzick regarding relocating the Private Watson Monument? Yeah, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange Thompson, that we refer this to staff, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. Resolutions, so we've got a few. The first resolution is regarding the border I had put in there, and this was based on discussion with all other cross-border mayors, there's something similar being done at councils all across the province right now, and, yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
No, I just wanted to add, near the end it says, and that, maybe we can circulate copies as well, we mentioned the prime minister and ministers, et cetera, maybe we could circulate to AMO, FMC, and potentially other border municipalities as well, outside of Niagara, I'll just add that in.
Okay, great, thank you for that, so you're moving it? You're making?
With that inclusion, yes.
Okay, with the amendment, okay? And seconded by Counselor Thompson?
Counselor Strange.
Thompson, Strange, Strange Thompson? Okay, any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? One opposed? Okay. Item 10.2, resolution, motion for support for clean water infrastructure for the Niagara River. This year, I was contacted by the mayor of Niagara Falls, New York, and everything's pretty self-explanatory in the actual resolution, but it's simply support for them to fix their wastewater treatment plant, so we don't have problems like we had in the past. Counselor Carrio makes, move the motion, seconded by Counselor Strange Thompson, if there's no discussion to it, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. In-camera ratification, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, looking for ratification of in-camera items, two of them, firstly, that there be direction to staff on how to deal with a particular tax appeal, including the treasurer being authorized to spend up to $50,000 in additional costs to support the city's position in a property tax appeal matter, and secondly, the direction be given to staff on how to proceed with a current integrity commissioner investigation.
Okay, thank you for that, looking for a motion? Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Yes, Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was opposed on number two.
Okay, okay, so we haven't voted yet, but, so, we'll do them, do you want to do them separately then? Can we split them, Mr. Clerk? We can, yeah, okay. So why don't we vote on the first one, in regard to the tax appeal? Same motion, same good mover, seconder? Yep, okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, and on the second one, we'll call the vote, direction to staff, all those in favor? Okay, opposed, with one opposed. All right, thank you for that. Are we in a new business, Mr. Clerk?
Bylaws first?
Oh, I'm sorry, my God, of course, the bylaws. Counselor Peter Angelo?
First, second, and third reading.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, to give the bylaws a first, second, and third reading, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. New business. Counselor LaCoco, and then, oh, wait a minute, did I just see the CAO's got his hand up too? He's got, is he allowed to have new business?
I know.
I don't know how this works, Mr. Clerk, we might have to check in a legal ruling on this, I'm not sure.
I already took a beat for that.
And it's bad enough, he's not even standing anymore, he doesn't even care, you know, oh, it's okay, you know what that means, you gotta buy the beverage next time we're out. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two quick ones, I talked to Mr. Nichol about this ahead of time, and I was wondering if he can give us an update on the rail relocation study, and he said he would be more than happy to.
Okay, he will?
Yes, he will.
Okay, sure, Mr. Nichol?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, and I'll keep my comments fairly brief. Over the past few years, following some council's direction, staff have done some extensive work to look at the potential of relocating trains outside of the city, or potentially by constructing grade separations, or alternative ways to limit the congestion that's caused when trains are queued through the city. That study completed in 2018, and we are moving into, we have been in Phase Two of our study for at least the last two years now. Phase Two is a confidential study that deals with negotiations with the rail agencies in terms of trying to find a solution to relocate train traffic in Niagara Falls. So there's limits to what I can share with you, but a lot of what we're doing has to work on, has to deal with some of the high-level executives at those trail agencies, or train agencies, sorry, and trying to provide them with a business case that suggests that they may have better interests in relocating their, their rail traffic through Niagara Falls. So Counselor, we're still working through that, and some of the challenges we've had relate strictly to the changeover and the other business interests of those rail agencies, and that's causing us some delays in moving forward on the next steps of our study. That's about all I can share on the study for now, Counselor.
Counselor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichol, through the mayor, and my last one is, I've had a lot of residents wondering, with all of the restrictions lifting in the large venues, when will the gallery be open for people to come and watch our council meetings?
So now, who does this one go, does this go to our clerk, or to our CAO, or to our fire chief?
I'll, I'll start.
Mr. Seale, oh, look at that.
It's old rule, see, at the region, if you're at the dice, you don't stand, right? Only, thank you, it's a good question, it's something we can bring up to the EOC, the vaccination policy is still in effect, and we're still looking at mitigation efforts to, to reduce total, total number of people in any given room. We have not actually done any of the physical distancing marking here, so if we did that, we would have to undertake that, we would have to still limit capacity under that, so we haven't done that, it's something if council wishes, we can certainly, you know, bring that, bring that forward to, to the EOC, we can, we can start to do some preliminary discussions, and then look when we can implement that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Dubrowski?
That's great news, by the way, just quick, in terms of New Year's Eve, the Niagara Parks Commission, Niagara Falls Tourism, and now that capacity limits are lifted, could we invite some of those folks, just to give an update on what's happening within the city at council?
Are you talking about, about New Year's Eve?
New Year's Eve, Scotiabank Convention Center's doing a number of events, I just think there's more buzz within the city, I would love to see some of those folks maybe come here and give a presentation, if there's any way we can promote it again through the city's website, or through other avenues, it's just, it's been two years where we haven't really done any events, and to no fault of our own, but I'd love to see an update here to council before, before December, just on the great many things that are happening within our city, and I'm not sure if that's a staff request that goes out, or that request goes out to your, from your office, but either way, welcoming people back to council chambers to provide us with updates, whether it's in person or virtual.
I think our former chair of Niagara Falls Tourism is going to give us an update right now.
Which, which one? Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, first of all, there have been probably four or five meetings with Serge Filicetti and all of the BIAs, and at this point, Niagara Falls Tourism has set aside a week for music all of, the week before Christmas, and it's been extremely successful. for music all of, the week before Christmas. And it's been extremely successful. All of the hotels and places are having live music. And that has been, it's on the, on the web, really doing extremely well. They made a decision that there's going to be, the night before of New Year's Eve, there's going to be live entertainment at the convention center. But they're not going to be down in the park. So that's, that could change. And maybe we should have a meeting or a report from Serge just to let the council. But if you want to go online with Niagara Falls Tourism, it's unbelievable, the, the music week that they're putting on. So.
That's great. Well, maybe, so Counsel Dubrowski, if you want to make a motion that we invite someone here to present, and whether it's going to be virtual or in person, depending on how everything plays out, did you want to have them to give us an update on?
Yeah, I think it'd be timely. And at the same time, I'm not sure, I don't, if I think about entertainment, and not that the city's not entertaining in its own ways sometimes, if we have an entertainment section on the city's website. But for people that are Googling City of Niagara Falls, because let's face it, with the PCR test, and who knows what's going to happen with that within the next couple of months. But those looking to travel in, in Ontario and Canada are going to be looking in Ontario and Canada. So the more we can help with the algorithms and the SEO and the searches and whatnot, the more info we post on the city's website, the better. So yeah, if they have time, I know everybody's busy right now, but yeah, if they can come in for a quick virtual session.
Okay, well, why don't you make that a motion, and we'll second?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Counsel Thompson?
Great.
That will invite someone back from, whether it's Serge or Niagara Falls Tourism, to give us an update at our next meeting?
Serge has made a request.
Okay, we'll tell Serge. I hope he's watching it right now. He'll know, he can be on that.
Yeah, the World Series has nothing on city council.
All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Counsel Dubrowski, did you want to talk about what you're doing at the Convention Center this weekend and the Spooky Award deadline this weekend?
Spooky Awards, I think the deadline is up eighty-six entries this year. Unbelievable. Almost at a hundred entries with homes. There's one street that is literally decorated, like every homeowner's decorated.
What street is that?
I forget. You have to go on the Spooky Awards map, niagarafalls.c slash Spooky Awards. So the spooky map goes live, I think, tomorrow. So if you haven't decorated your home and signed up, it doesn't matter. It's live now. Sean's saying it's live now. So go to the city's website, find the Spooky Awards. There's a very cool interactive map. And there's also a costume contest. But go to the city's website for all things Halloween and spooky. Yeah, we're running two consumer shows this weekend at Scotiabank Convention Center. The first time, thankfully, Comic-Con's kind of back in its own respect. It's a smaller toned-down version. We'll call it a two-point-O, and also horror event. So restrictions are lifted. The event industry, including myself, is happy. And it's great for the city. It's great for tourism partners. So yeah, couldn't be happier. And who knows, maybe by March, we won't be wearing masks indoors either. So I kept on saying there's light at the end of the tunnel. And finally, twenty months later, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Anyway.
And lastly, I'm sorry, for anyone who wants to vote on the Spooky Awards, the deadline, it's this Sunday, is it?
Uh, this Sunday. So head to the city's website, check out the Spooky Awards map. You can see which creations you think are the, the top three or the top five. People's choice, you can vote online.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. Other new business? Oh, I'm sorry. Of course, I almost forgot. Thank you for the reminder. Our CAO would like to, this is the first time I've ever seen the CAO have new business.
And I already got, already asked the clerk for some indulgence. A matter has come up late, and I wasn't able to put a report together. And to be honest with you, I think there's some confusion with regards to my authority in this matter. However, the success of the Spooky Awards, and they've taken off, has caused a slight overage in our budget on that. It's about a thousand dollars. And I want it in full transparency, inform council that we'll be taking that out of the fee waiver budget, which council normally controls, to, you know, to pay for some of the additional administrative costs that have, that have been occurred. Normally, I think only council deals with the fee waiver budget, though that's an unwritten rule. So I just want it to be transparent. So no one comes back with a next report, you see there'll be an extra thousand dollar line. But just to be, to be, to be clear, and I'm going to blame Chris for it, because now we have more people entering this thing. There's more cost associated with it, which is a good thing, though. For a thousand dollars, I think there's a lot of great stuff happening in the community.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, make it official. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange Thompson, that the thousand dollar be allocated from our, what's it called?
Fee waiver budget.
Fee waiver budget to pay for the, the bus for the Spooky Awards. All those in favor?
Fuel, it's all included.
The fuel too? Okay.
And just quick, thank you to staff, Kathy Moldenhauer and Jeff Karashi, and Emily Cox and the Rec Department. Like, been absolutely phenomenal. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of logistics, but they, they've really taken the bull by the horns and run with it. So it's a hugely, hugely successful event for years to come. But I just wanted to give a little shout out to, to staff as well, who've done a phenomenal job.
You know, it's very kind. And I want to shout out to you, though, because during COVID, when everybody was locked down and scared and afraid to go out, didn't know what to do, bored, didn't know if they were even going to go door to door, that you created this Spooky Award idea, and it's taken right off. And I can't get over, it's become like Christmas two-point-O, where everyone decorates their house. Like, I can't get over, when I drive down streets, the effort people put into these ten-foot skeletons and these massive spiders. I mean, it looks, it's not like it used to be, the cheap pumpkin with a candle in it. I mean, my gosh, this has gone to a whole other level.
Or a rotten pumpkin.
Yeah, and I got to say, it's because of your marketing background and the things that you've done, that, that the city benefits. And I'm glad that the staff are working so hard. And I got to agree with you. Rec culture, whether it's Trillium Awards, whether it's these kind of awards, whether it's Christmas decoration, or like, they're there to be right woven into the fabric of the community. And what a great combination. You guys together are doing an amazing job. So thanks for all your effort as well, and all of you, all of your efforts volunteering and showing up at events and representing me or on your committees. That's what really matters, right? It's not us and them. It's just us. Did we have any other new business?
I'd like to vote for Counsel Strange for Spooky Awards. Still freaking me out a little bit.
Right?
Well, and just before we do, yeah, we've got, and I just wanted to point out, I think if anyone didn't already see this, I've got a Counsel Thompson thing too. So there's actually three of us here in the chambers. Counsel Thompson, you want to say something?
Yes, I moved our adjournment.
All right. Seconded by Counsel, the other Counsel Strange Thompson, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. We're adjourned.